Welcome, everybody, to this regular meeting of the Verona Planning Board on February 23rd, 2023. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bernardo.
President.
Mr. Katz.
Here.
Mr. Lilly.
Here.
Mr. Heineman.
Here.
Mr. Camudi. Mr. Dold.
Here.
Councilman McAvoy.
Here.
Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mayor Roman.
Here.
Vice Chairman Freski.
Present.
Chairperson Pearson.
Here.
And Board Attorney, Mr. Massera.
Here.
Also appearing tonight, we have Mr. Dobizowski from Boswell Engineering, Mr. DeCarlo, our zoning board official, and myself, Marcy MacRally, I'm the acting board secretary.
Thank you. Would everybody please rise for the equal.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the heart of the United States of America, the representative of the republic, who stands one nation, under God, indivisible, never be destroyed.
Madam Chair, before we start, can I say, Marcy, welcome, and so far, you're doing great.
I just want to read the Open Public Meeting Act. The agenda and notice that this meeting has been posted 48 hours in advance. On the bulletin board designated for this purpose, located in the lobby of the municipal building, 600 Bloomfield Avenue, Verona, New Jersey, the agenda and notice of this meeting has been faxed or electronically transmitted to two newspapers circulating within the township as required by statute in order so that the public may be informed 48 hours in advance of this public meeting. With that said, a couple of updates, we have a couple of new faces, the board welcomes Mr. Frank Dobizowski. I can't say it, it's not going to be right, from Boswell Engineering, who will be representing our township engineers from Boswell. We also welcome zoning code official Mike DeCarlo, Ms. Marcy MacRally, and congratulations to Mr. Katz and Mr. Bernardo upon having, they've already been sworn in. At this time, I will open public participation for any member of the public who wishes to make a statement or ask a question about anything that is not on this evening's agenda. If you have anything that you would like to say, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close public participation and move on to item F, Approval of Meeting Minutes from January 26, 2023. Everybody has received a copy of those. Is there any comments or changes that I can't make, but we can have made? Would somebody like to move the meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Freski, second, and I will just state for the record that Mr. Bernardo will be abstaining from the meeting minutes because he was not at the last meeting. Do we just do an overall eye?
Yeah.
Okay, so, all in favor of passing the meeting minutes?
Aye.
Anyone not in favor? And one abstention. Okay. The meeting minutes are approved. Moving on to item G, Resolution 202301, which is our finding of consistency with Verona's master plan, the ordinance 202301, an ordinance authorizing and encouraging electric vehicle supply, service equipment, EBSC, and make-ready parking spaces. Has everybody had a chance to read the resolution? Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Heineman.
I didn't know if we wanted to put in the resolution, just the comments for just the corrections on the ordinance, but it's in the minutes, so.
They sent a meeting memo to the council and the clerk, and you guys, I think that they're addressing that at the, say it again?
Then it's fine.
Okay.
It's drafted.
Okay, so, would somebody like to move Resolution 23, 2023-01?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman McAvoy, seconded by Jason Heineman. We are going to do a roll call of all vote on this. Why not? I don't know.
Yeah.
Are you sure?
If you please, you can.
I don't know.
It's just a memorialization of resolution, but you can roll.
Okay. Maybe we're not doing a roll call.
Roll call, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm going to make the new secretary work.
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Lilly?
Yes.
Mr. Camudi? Mr. Dold?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Freski?
Yes.
Chairperson Pearson?
Yes. When you, just a quick update, even though somebody moves and seconds, you still have to get their yea or nay.
I'm sorry.
Even though it would be kind of not right then to vote no after moving, but you should just call her name.
Share my apologies, that's your Hindeman?
No worries. Yes. Chair, I thought that the resolution is a roll call.
And one more. And I'm a yes. Councilman McAvoy's a yes.
The resolution passes. Resolution 2023-02, Improving Revised Site Plan for Pearl Rock 2301, not 1401. There was only one disapproval, and he is not here at this meeting tonight, so who moves?
Yes, everyone's out.
Does anyone want to make a motion to move this?
Make a motion.
Okay. Mayor Roman moves the resolution?
Second.
Who was that?
Jeremy.
Jeremy Katz, second. Can we get a roll call vote for this resolution, please?
Sure, Mr. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Lilly?
Yes.
Mr. Hindeman?
Yes.
Mr. Camudi's not here, Mr. Dold?
Yes.
Councilman McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mayor Roman?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Freski?
Yes.
Chairperson Pearson?
Yes.
All right. Resolution 2023-02 moves, forward, passes, et cetera. Without any further ado, unless there's some ado.
Madam Chair, I have refused myself from this application, so I'll be leaving the meeting.
Okay, well, report that. That's Mr. Neal, will be refusing himself for the remainder of tonight's meeting.
Now you have more room that way.
Right, without further ado, we welcome back the applicant, Mr. Inglesino, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good evening to everyone. Congratulations to new members and new appointees, and to you, Madam Board Secretary. For the record, John Inglesino with the firm Inglesino Webster, located in Precipiny, New Jersey, here on behalf of the applicant, One Sunset Avenue LLC, with regard to major site plan approval for property located at One Sunset Avenue here in Verona. Just to refresh the board, this project consists of a 200-unit multifamily inclusionary development with 185 market rate units and 15 affordable units pursuant to a not-rural affordable housing settlement. We were last here before the board on December 1st, so this is a continuation of that hearing. Madam Chair, we have two witnesses for this evening, Matt Sekler of Stonefield Engineering, who is our traffic expert, and then Jonathan Schwartz, who is a principal in the applicant, who will testify with respect to operations. So I would like to call Mr. Sekler as my first witness.
Mr. Sekler, could you state your name and address for the record? Yes, Matthew Sekler, that's S-E-C-K-L-E-R, with Stonefield Engineering Design, address is 92 Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey. And, Mr. Sekler, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you got in this evening is the truth? Yes, I do.
Well, Mr. Sekler, can you please provide the board with your qualifications, your educational background, professional experience, and any licenses that you possess?
Certainly, I'm a bachelor of science in civil engineering from Union College in Schenectady, New York, and a master's in city regional planning from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional engineer and a professional planner in the state, also recognized professional traffic operations engineer by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which requires both examination and experience, been practicing the field for over 15 years, been accepted for over 150 boards in the state as a traffic engineer.
Madam Chair, offer Mr. Sekler as an expert in the area of traffic engineering.
He's accepted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Sekler, would you kindly describe for the board the traffic aspects of this application, and if you would also attempt to weave into your testimony the traffic comments contained in the Boswell Review Letter of February 16th?
Certainly.
And if he misses any of those, I'm sure the board will get those questions answered.
Certainly, and I'll briefly go over the data that we collect as part of a traffic study, the methodology we use, the analysis we performed and those conclusions, as well as addressing some other comments and questions that have come up at previous hearings related to circulation and site accessibility. So as part of a traffic impact study, the first thing we do is we get an understanding for how the existing roadway network around the site operates. This site is located at the intersection of Sunset Avenue and Bloomfield Avenue, Bloomfield Avenue being a county road, it is considered a principal arterial roadway. An arterial roadway is like the arteries in your body, it is pumping the traffic through your neighborhoods, connecting local roads to higher-level roadways such as state highways, interstates, and the such. So Bloomfield Avenue is the major road in this area, has a 35 mile per hour speed limit, and carries around 25,000 vehicles per day. Sunset Avenue, obviously, lesser roadway, more residential in character, 25 mile per hour roadway. In order to assess the traffic conditions in the area, we performed traffic counts in the site vicinity. That included counts on Thursday, September 26, 2019, and Thursday, September 22, 2022. So we actually bookend, I would say, the effects of COVID traffic quite well before COVID in 2019 while school was in session, and I would say, as school got back to normal in 2022, when it was back in session in September 22 of this most recent fall. We did those counts in 2019 specifically when the school that were obviously on our site peaks as its arrival and dismissal time. So those counts were done at 8:30 to 9:30 in the morning, and 2:30 to 3:30 in the afternoon, because at the time, we want to understand what was the traffic conditions because of the school, and what were those effects, and with the school being eliminated, what is that kind of change in traffic that you'd expect in the area, even if nothing was developed on the site, the school was no longer there. The counts we performed the most recently were from 7:00 in the morning to 9:00 in the morning, and 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on a weekday. That's your typical peak rush hour traffic through the area, and again, we've not only utilized those counts, but there is DOT counts in the area that allows us to see how Bloomfield Avenue generally fluctuates throughout the day, so we're very comfortable in understanding that those periods that we studied in 2022 were the worst hours of the day that is experienced in this stretch on a typical weekday. The reason why we study these worst hours is, as traffic engineers, we study the worst-case conditions, you know, if it's, you know, traffic seems great at 11 o'clock at night when you're leaving a planning board hearing, but really, what most people experience is those rush hour level of traffic. So what we really clue in on is that 7:45 to 8:45 hour, that was the busiest hour of traffic volume at the Sunset-Bloomfield Avenue intersection, and in the afternoon, from 6:15, 5:15 to 6:15, again, that's that busiest evening rush hour period. That's what we utilize to do a lot of our analysis. Now, as I mentioned, this is a site that currently sees a level of traffic to it, and there's some stark differences between schools and residential buildings in terms of the style of traffic they have. Schools have significantly high peaks, and then they have valleys where there's very little activity throughout the day, but what you experience typically at a school, and I grew up immediately across the street from the school, 15, 20, even 30 minutes, depending on their bell schedule, you'll see this surge of traffic, and then at the end, near school dismissal, again, you'll see a similar surge of traffic as everyone is either dropping their children off, picking them up, buses are there, teachers are arriving or leaving, all that generally happens in a very condensed period of time. Now, when we were out there doing our counts even back in 2019 to see how that school operates, what we noticed is exactly what I mentioned, you see high levels of peak traffic, you know, concentrated in a 30-minute window or so. You see the yellow school buses, in this case, most of the buses were the mini variety, not the full, I guess, 50-something seaters, but the, you know, 20 to 30-seat buses, mini buses. You see a lot of employees arriving, teachers, employees and staff, and then you see, again, some general drop-off and pickup. When we did our counts in 2019, we found that that site currently generates 87 trips in the current condition going in and out of the school in that peak hour, and when school dismisses, about 101 trips in that hour, as cars, buses, everyone's coming in and out.
Are you referring to a chart within your report right now?
Not specific, I mean, it's in the report, it was in an earlier version of the report, I think the traffic memorandum included it, if you want me to refer to a table. This would be in a May 9, 2022 traffic assessment report, and this would, I'm referring to some of the data that'll be in Table 2, which is on page 3. We had supplemented this report with another report, I don't know if that specific data table is in that one. Was the date? That was May 9, 2022, but there was a subsequent report in October that I would say is more comprehensive and may not have that data point specifically called out.
Looking at Table 2 on the six-page document that you sent us, it's like, really, it's a six?
Yes.
Page 2.
Yes.
Table 2.
Table 2, page 3. So what we also noticed is the queuing that occurs. In the morning, when drop-off occurs, what we've noticed is there were cases where, you know, mix of passenger cars and the mini buses back up past the first driveway of the site, basically up to the second driveway of the site, causing a significant amount of congestion of, you know, 10, 15 vehicle lengths back from the intersection at Sunset and Bloomfield. And again, at the intersection of Sunset and Bloomfield, you have a very high-volume road that takes up the majority of the green time at that light. You know, typically, Sunset only gets, you know, anywhere between 14 to 22 seconds of green time every two minutes. So again, the vast majority of the time that's allotted at that light is to Bloomfield Avenue because that's where the steady flow of traffic is. But what we notice is because of the school, because of the drop-off, because of these buses, you see some significant queues in the current condition. What we also noticed, again, in that current condition, is that the angle of that intersection and the tight radii at the turns make it difficult for some of those larger wheel-based vehicles to make turns. So if someone is a little too far up beyond the stop bar, waiting for the light to turn green, and a school bus wants to make a right-hand turn, it becomes very difficult and tight at that general intersection. And this is all existing conditions, this is all what, you know, we see out there now. What I want to get into, obviously, as part of this application, is what is the effects of this site's traffic? How much traffic is being generated by this development, and how do, what does it impact the roadway network? Now, to determine how much traffic this site would generate, traffic engineers like myself utilize a publication called the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. This is engineers like myself have sat and counted at, in this case, multifamily buildings, and we sit at the driveways and we count how many cars are coming out, how many cars are coming in, and based on the number of units in the building, we could assess a formula that projects and calculates how much traffic a new development would generate of similar size. And there are dozens and dozens of studies that have been performed to come up with these formulas. It is noted that these are formulas specific for this style building, which is a mid-rise apartment building, so this is not accounting for high-rise buildings, 15-story buildings, 10-story buildings have different traffic characteristics than this one, and also, we also grouped them in different locations, so this is not considered a mid-rise building or multifamily building close to rail transit, which may have different traffic characteristics. This is a multifamily building, a mid-rise size, not close to rail, and they call rail, I think it's about a quarter to a half-mile distance away. So while there is bus service in the area, and looking at census data, I believe about 14% of the people within the census tract commute via not their single occupancy car, we, as part of this study, use this book value of trip generation for multifamily buildings, a mid-rise size, not close to transit. And that value that we pulled out has projected this site to generate in the morning and evening peak hour around 74 to 78 trips over the hour. Now, a trip can be counted a car going out, a trip can be a car coming in. If someone is leaving in the morning to drop their kid off at daycare and they're coming back home, that one person actually accounted for two of those trips. Those 74 trips, again, thinking about it in an hour time span, a little more than one car a minute going in or out of the driveways during the busiest hours. During less busy hours, perhaps 1 o'clock in the afternoon, you may have 40 trips going out of this site. Again, about half the amount during some of those lesser hours, and again, as you go later in the evening, those numbers will drop even further. For comparison purposes, during that morning dismissal, as I mentioned before, I'm sorry, a morning arrival for the school, they were at 87 trips, we're actually going to 74. So we are dropping the amount of trips in the morning compared to what's out there today, and again, I don't anticipate anyone in this building driving their own minibus, so the type of vehicles are also getting a little bit smaller, a little more movable in size than what some of the vehicles that utilize the site today. In the school dismissal time period, you know, where there was 101 vehicles, we would project 41 people going in or out of the site again during that kind of school dismissal time period around 2:30 to 3:30. In the evening rush hour?
Can you refer us to where your?
Yes, this is all that same Table 2 that you?
On the old?
In the old report, yes. Table 2, the old report, shows the comparison between this proposed development's trip generation and the existing site's trip generation. The last set of columns in Table 2 on that old report, which is the one, May 9, 2022, looks at the evening rush hour. Obviously, that school does not generate a significant amount of traffic in the evening rush hour, that 5:15 to 6:15, while this development will have people arriving back home during that time period. So there is more traffic being generated in the evening rush hour to this site than the current site today. We looked at and compared that trip generation and added that trip generation to the counts that we performed back in 2022 to basically add to the existing traffic levels the projected traffic from this developer. We also accounted for what's considered background growth, which is a increasing traffic volume data point that the NJDOT provides for all different counties in the state, which is, accounts for general growth in the community. That could be vacancies that exist in downtown that may be filled, it counts for small to medium-sized developments nearby. So if there is a 20-unit building being built, you know, a quarter mile away, this compounded background growth factor accounts for that. So again, the state of New Jersey assumes traffic volume is constantly going to be increasing over time, so we've accounted for that in our analysis as well. So we layered in existing counts, its background growth, and then the trips that'll be generated by this residential development, and we analyzed, how will that site, how will that intersection operate at Sunset and Bloomfield Avenue in the future with this future level of traffic? And what we found is that the changes in delay and changes in traffic are minimal. In fact, it gets better in the morning peak hour because we are taking out the bus traffic, the school traffic, we're dropping the traffic levels, we're actually spreading the peak out a little bit more. Again, schools have a lot of that traffic all in a 15, 20-minute period, if you're on that road during that time period, it's that peaking factor. Residential buildings have a little bit more spread out, so you will not, even though we are generating 74 trips, they're not going to be all at once like the school was. In the evening peak hour, although we are increasing the level of traffic, there'll be a minimal, and I would say, non-not noticeable increase in delay at that intersection. In fact, that intersection is projected to increase in delay overall, that means it accounts for Bloomfield traffic and Sunset traffic by a little less than two seconds of additional delay for the average person going through that intersection. You're coming from Sunset, your increase in delay will be about three to four seconds of delay. So if you're waiting at that light, you're waiting about three or four seconds longer with the influence of this development. And the reason why you could, the way to kind of frame that is that we're generating about one car a minute, so that about two cars at that light will be new with this development in the evening rush hour. Those two cars in the evening rush hour will still allow for the same people to get through on that same green light. So if you're waiting for that green light, and you have the second car in line, you might become the fourth person in line, but you're still getting through that same green light on Sunset Avenue in the future condition.
What's the LOS of that particular light?
Yes.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, that's like, that's easy.
That approach, the Sunset approach is E, as you mentioned. And again, some of that is because of the way that light is timed. Even if there was one person at Sunset waiting, they have to wait almost 100 seconds for that light to come back around to give them a green light if they just missed it. If you get there and the light just turned red, and you're the only person on Sunset, you gotta wait for over 100 seconds for the left turns to go on Bloomfield, the threes to go on Bloomfield, till it's finally your turn. So a lot of the function of the delay on that approach is just because Sunset gets such a small amount of time compared to Bloomfield. It's not necessarily the fact that you aren't getting through on the green light. In the current condition, people don't get through on the green light, because of the bus, because of this, when you're there at school time, and you're waiting, and you're stuck in that school traffic, you know, at that second driveway, you know, backed up that far, you're not getting through at that light. But what we expect is that queue to be cut down by about half with this development because the school bus size is obviously smaller than a normal car, the pickup of school buses is slower than a car, and the volume that we're sending out is not concentrated and spread out more over that hour in a whole as opposed to in a very small period of time where you have that longer queue.
And that light's controlled by Essex County, correct?
The light is controlled by Essex County, and again, we discussed that intersection with the county previously. I know from, and again, this was one of the comments in the Boswell Review Letter, about putting in a right-turn lane at that intersection. We've discussed and we've shared all of this analysis with the county, it is their belief that a right-turn lane would have no benefit to this intersection with the removal of the school. They agree, we've sent them videos, we've sent them our analysis, that the school is one of the main reasons why there is issues with that light in terms of the amount of queuing and the difficulty for some cars to make right turns or right turns into Sunset or right turns off of Sunset. However, as part of this application, in discussions with the county, the applicant is going to be required to pay into the county's Traffic Signal Improvement Fund, where the county could obviously utilize that money to, if it's needed, add that right-turn lane, they could use it to increase the technology in the intersections, the intersection operates as a smarter intersection, they could improve the pedestrian approaches at the intersection and increase pedestrian safety. But the applicant is in agreement to provide that improvement funds to the county so that they could target whatever they feel is best for that intersection itself. So that's a lot of discussion about the off-site, and again, I know this is plenty more application where obviously some of the off-site traffic impacts are somewhat, I would say, limited in scope, but I wanted to give the board the information about the background, background information that we've collected. On-site, the site has been designed to comply with the parking requirements of the ordinance, which requires 1.9 parking spaces per unit. We will also comply with the number of EV spaces that are required. Technically, because we are providing those EV spaces, we do get a credit in terms of there are 10% of the EV spaces, we'll actually count two for one, but we don't need that credit to satisfy the ordinance parking requirement. On-site, and again, I have some exhibits that I'll show in a second, there's been improvements made to the circulation patterns on-site, so I think this might be actually a good time to address that.
Yep.
You know, I think the mayor has had?
Hey, just so that we don't get off too far, it's an off-site traffic question. There's a substantial difference between these two types of developments that I would say it's probably a fair assumption that almost all of the traffic generated by the school is at the start of school and at the end of school, and between those two times, there's very minimal traffic. A multifamily development is going to have a very different traffic profile in that people may leave or arrive at any time of the day, particularly with work from home being such a common thing right now. People may have different start times, et cetera. Did you analyze the traffic in terms of a full-day traffic generation as opposed to simply peak hour?
Yeah, so what we, and again, you're 100% right in terms of the Yeah, so, so what we, and again, you're a hundred percent right in terms of the kind of flow within the, within the site. So again, for instance, at, you know, at twelve o'clock, from eleven to twelve o'clock, you'd probably be looking at traffic volumes between forty and fifty percent of that peak number. So for, it's usually between, between thirty and forty-two, forty-three would be what you expect during those, let's say, in the middle of the day. Someone wants to grab lunch, they're working from home, that would be that, that increase in traffic in the middle of the day. That also counts if someone decides to, you know, the Amazon package arrives in the middle of the day, that's accounted for in the trip generation as well. Because what we're counting is cars going in and out of the driveways. So we don't care if it's a guest, employee of the building, if it's a resident, Amazon, they're basically all getting counted in that number. In terms of over the day, again, I think this actually was mentioned in the Boswell report, I believe the number is about nine hundred trips over the day.
In the build condition?
In the build condition.
Do you have the no-build condition?
Oh, you mean the, in the existing school condition? I don't have over the entire day, but looking at the, I'd say, the arrival and the dismissal, that's about two hundred. My guess is probably under three hundred throughout the day is the existing, is the existing school.
The increase would be somewhere around six, seven?
About six hundred.
Seven hundred, six fifty, seven hundred at the most.
I'd say around six hundred trips over the twenty-four hours of the day. Again, I, I look at traffic volumes as that I want the traffic on the roads when the capacity's at its peak.
I just want to say, how does that only leave somebody sitting for maybe a hundred seconds at that light? It just doesn't sound realistic.
Well, if I'm adding...
Nine hundred, seven hundred trips.
Right, but that's over the day. That's, could be forty people at, from ten to eleven o'clock at night over an hour, forty people is less than one a minute. So if I'm, if I'm coming down that intersection, and honestly, it's one of the best practices of traffic management, is you want the people on the road when the road is actually not its busiest. So I would prefer to have traffic on this road at ten o'clock in the morning, eleven o'clock in the morning, twelve o'clock, then have them at seven-thirty in the morning or four-thirty at night. So I actually prefer to have it spread out more than have high peaks.
Can I just also refer back to that table two trip generation that you were referring to earlier?
Yes.
In your discussion, and you have weekend afternoon peak hour, and you have the school, existing private school as counted, you know, spitting out a hundred and one trips on a weekend, that, that's very unusual.
That's, that, that's...
That does not sound right.
That's weekday, that, that, that is a weekday afternoon, it should not say weekend. I apologize for that, yes.
That's like a messed up thing right there. So weekend afternoon peak, should say weekday?
That should be weekday afternoon peak. The school does not generate any significant level of traffic, they may have an event or something like that, but, you know, I would consider zero. For this site comparison, you're looking similar to the evening peak hour, it'd be about seventy to eighty trips would be generated during your Saturday peak period.
Okay.
Quick question, Madam?
Yes. Mr. Sekler, you're, are you saying that the ITE's trip generation that you go by includes UPS, FedEx, all that?
It's any trip that entered or exited a site. So any traffic that enters or exits a site, we don't discriminate what type of vehicle, who's driving it. If a car goes in or out of a site, it's counted.
Okay, you referred to Boswell's review here, and I'm looking at number five on this, and obviously we'll, we'll go to our expert here, but asking for testimony, and maybe I'm a little ahead of the game here, maybe we should go through this document, but it says, for, for trips such as, testimony is needed on anticipated frequency for other non-resident trips such as Amazon Prime, FedEx.
So you'll hear about frequency from, I think, is the next witness is the operator who'll be able to speak to how they handle in terms of the volume of those types, but I do have an exhibit, and again, I'd be happy, I was getting into the on-site design, showing where we expect those deliveries to occur and how that will not impact the circulation of the site. So the site's been designed with those type of trips in mind, and again, I'd be happy to jump into that if, if that's where we want to go is to, onto the site.
I'm just asking, your testimony is saying these are included in your numbers?
Yes.
In your projecting numbers as well?
Yes.
That's a tough one to project, isn't it?
Well, it, it is always changing, but I would say that the use of things like FedEx or Amazon actually helps reduce the trips potentially during other times of day. So if the Amazon truck is dropping off your groceries, you don't need to leave on Saturday, let's say, be one of those eighty people that are going to do, get your groceries. So there is somewhat of trade.
It's just a really tough thing to actually project, though, because there's two hundred units with a variety of people that are going to have a variety of needs. So it's really got to be almost impossible to know how many people are ordering from where.
Absolutely, but again, our trip generation is based on physical counts at operating sites, but like I said, if Amazon, you know, is bringing six packages together to the site, again, that's six people that didn't have to go out and go get something. So it's almost like a bus for your goods. You know, it's, six people would ride the bus someplace, six packages riding the Amazon bus back to your house.
So it's interesting that you use a terminology "bus" because you said before, when you're talking about the intersection, you're not going to have the bus that slows traffic down. What you're saying now, you are having them.
We're having the, you know, the Amazon delivery vehicle that's going through the neighborhood today is also going to this building, yes.
And in your experience, the Amazon's...
The Amazon delivery truck is not a school bus, correct?
Correct.
When you are presenting, and I don't mean to interrupt, Councilman, but it, when you're presenting, I would really prefer you to refer to whatever chart that you're deriving your numbers, so you're not just hurling numbers at us from left field. I want to see what you're referring to when you're going through this.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
I'm going to jump back to a full-day trip generation.
Yes.
So you've got nine hundred trips per day, full-day condition. There's fourteen-hundred-and-forty minutes in a day, so you've got twenty-four hours, nine sixty minutes. So if those trips were evenly spaced around the block, you're going to have like every, every, a little over every thirty seconds, you've got a car coming out of there, I think. You know, the averages kind of don't seem to work. You've got nine hundred trips coming out of there, and you're saying that the queuing is, you know, is not going to happen at the light? I'm kind of not understanding unless the traffic is so lumpy in the mornings and in the evenings.
So again, I'm getting in a day, twenty-four hours a day, sixty hours in a minute, fourteen hundred or so.
Right.
Minute, fourteen-forty, and the number of trips is nine hundred. So we're talking about, about little less than one, less than one a minute.
Right, assuming that on, that everyone's going out of there at even rate.
Right, which they're not, which, 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 again, which is why we focus on the rush hours, because we know we're going to get, you know, six percent, seven percent of the traffic, let's say, during the peak hour, seven percent during another peak hour.
But if we've got a, you know, a hundred-second light cycle at that light, you know, I just kind of conceptually, I have a very hard time seeing how you're not going to have a queue just out of the sheer number of trips that the site is generating.
There's going, you're going to, by no means is everyone on this street lucky enough that when they get to the light, the light's going to be green at Sunset. There will be a queue, but the queue will not be as bad as it is today during the school rush hour peak.
But, but there may be queue during off-hours.
There, if we send out less, so outside of the rush hour time periods, the middle of the day, you're looking at less than one car a minute. Coming in, and again, this is in or out. So if you're coming into the, you're coming into the site, you're coming back from going to the gym, you're coming back at eleven o'clock in the afternoon, you're not adding anything to the queue. So that number that you're talking about in terms of thinking nine hundred trips, only four hundred and fifty of them are leaving. So in terms of the queue that, again, I assume you're concerned with this at Sunset, you really look at four hundred and fifty of those trips heading to the light.
Right, I'm just trying to sort of conceptualize what the queue may be during non-peak hour conditions.
Right, so in a non-peak hour condition, the volume on Sunset from the neighborhood is also less, you know? So if, if we were to go out there at eleven o'clock in the afternoon on Tuesday, Sunset Avenue without this development may be having two cars at the light, one car at the light coming down that stretch. This site at that time generates forty-one trips, half of which are leaving, so twenty or so trips. So about one car will be added to that, two cars, and that'll be the queue at the light. Three cars could easily pass through that intersection when the light turns green.
So I have one question, if you have this information. Earlier, you testified about just the general existing traffic, you know, down Bloomfield Avenue at the intersection. Did you analyze what the total traffic coming from Sunset was? And if you did, you know, what percentage of that traffic coming in and out of Sunset would be attributed to this new development, you know, those nine hundred trips?
Yeah, so what I don't have is, there has not been a twenty-four-hour study done of the street, but what I do have is I know what the traffic volumes are during the evening rush hour, which is, should be unaffected by the school. And so those volumes, and based on the chairwoman's recommendation, I will refer to where it is in the chart, where it is in the, in the report. So on figure two, in the October twenty-two report, these are the existing traffic volumes that were counted. In the parentheses is the PM rush hour, which, this is figure two A nine, so appendix nine.
This is just, you can't put that up there.
I, I didn't have the, I have exhibits loaded here.
Oh, you said in PDF.
I mean, if you gave me five minutes, I could probably get it onto this computer, but...
I mean, I think that you should definitely get it up there. We'll, we'll take a five-minute break. How's that?
And I made the interim correct reminder, Matt, there, that I made just for the record. I divided this a long way, nine hundred cars spread across fourteen-hundred-and-forty minutes to about one and, one and a half minutes, because the cars not, thirty-seven seconds, I decided to divide it a long way.
Fail, major fail.
Hey, you, you got a great forgetting, forgetting the emoji went wrong.
Do you want to take a five-minute break to, to get that?
If, you don't think that's important, I could...
Why don't we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, I, I will listen, I reversed up.
With the board, and we want to provide the board with all of the information that it wants, and we're happy to do that. But I, I do want to point out that the redevelopment plan that was negotiated for this site requires, requires all turns out of the complex to go right, make the right-hand turn onto Sunset. It would be unlawful for anyone coming out of the development to make a left on Sunset. So, and that was a policy decision, as the mayor and Councilman McAvoy knows, that was a policy decision that was insisted upon by the governing body. We're hearing there may be some concerns about wait times at the traffic light and so forth. We're more than happy, if the board feels that it, that's going to cause too much pressure on that light, we're more than happy to oblige the board and permit left-hand turns onto Sunset. We're more than happy to provide the board with any information that you want. I'm not sure where it's leading, except it's going to keep us here longer, but we're more than happy to accommodate the board if you want us to make lefts. Otherwise, I'm not sure where this is going, but we're happy to provide you the information that you request.
Where this is going, Mr. Inglesino, is so that when the numbers are getting thrown at us, we have a general understanding and we're not just sitting there listening to seventy-nine and sixty-three and twenty-two and two right-hand turns and a left. I want to see, and I think that, that we have a right to have him explain his report and testify clearly to the board. Where this is going is there. That is it.
Okay, that's it.
That is the end result that we want. We want to understand his testimony, and beyond that, I don't think anybody on the board, just to go one step further, is going to accommodate that right-hand, left-hand, the left-hand turnout, because obviously there, there was a lot of reasoning behind that.
Yeah, and, and we've agreed, so it's just, we're hearing there may be some concern about the stacking at the intersection, but of course, that's caused by the right-hand turnout. But in any case, let's proceed, we want to provide the board with the information as you're requesting.
So thank you for giving me the time to set this up.
Of course, thank you.
Should be coming up on the screen in a second. Okay, oh, not the, scroll the screen down so we stay on the right part of the paper. So this is figure two, I'm going to zoom in so we can actually see some numbers.
Thank you.
All right, I don't know if your eyesight is like mine, mine's not great. Okay, so this is showing the existing volumes at this, at the intersection. And I'll walk through, the parentheses are the PM peak hour. So if you want to see what the site does today, without the school, if the school didn't exist, PM peak hour is a great hour to look at. As you can see, coming out from Sunset, there are fourteen cars making a left turn and thirty-one cars making a right turn today during the evening rush hour. Turning into Sunset, you have thirty-four making a right and forty-three making a left turn. So generally, when I think of the residential traffic that exists today on Sunset, that's your typical peak hour. And, you know, the, the thing with rush hours is those people that are leaving, that coming back are likely the people that are leaving, you know, generally around the same in the morning. So that's, kind of gives you the idea of what level of traffic is non-school in this area. You probably see the same during the summer or, you know, some holidays, although there'll be some vacations mixed in. But that's generally the volume that we're expecting during the evening rush hour. So again, fourteen and thirty-one making left, rights and left turns out of Sunset, that's forty-five vehicles over an hour. In terms of the traffic that we'll be adding in the rush hour, leaving will be about thirty trips. So we will be making it from forty, let's say, forty-three to seventy-three cars leaving. Now, right, so, but that light, again, seventy, seventy-three cars over an hour is still like one, two cars a minute. So at the light, the light takes about two minutes to, to cycle, you'll have about four cars in the queue. That's the rough approximation for what the queue will be going from about one to two cars to three to four cars in the evening rush hour. So can I, I don't want to stop the board, I know there's some questions, I'd be happy to move on to on-site circulation.
Well, go to, go to A eleven, please. This is as built.
This is as built, the traffic generated solely by this development. No traffic related to, no traffic related to the neighborhood. This is just this site's traffic.
Great, so you have no deliveries, no deliveries going up that first driveway at all? Zero? Is that a zero?
In the PM peak hour, we have one coming, none in the morning, none in the morning peak hour. So from, from...
That's, that's wrong.
From eight, from seven forty-five, from seven forty-five to eight forty-five, no deliveries. Now, that delivery area is not necessarily the area where Amazon will go, not necessarily the delivery area where DoorDash will go, so for some reason you order in breakfast in the morning.
You're right, it probably, a lot of that would go up this second driveway.
Correct, the first driveway delivery is...
We'll talk about that in a few minutes.
You'll talk about that in a few minutes. The first delivery driveway is more utilized for, let's say, you have a furniture delivery, move-in, move-out, garbage pickup, that's primarily the first driveway.
They have box trucks going up that driveway in their, in their circulation and turn radius. So I thought box trucks, that could be maintenance, delivery, the guys that come to fix the air conditioning, maybe?
Correct.
All those guys, they don't come at seven-thirty in the morning, right? They come at nine-thirty? What time do they come?
I mean, again, I, I think it's...
We'll ask Jonathan, yes.
You could ask, you could ask Jonathan again. They, I imagine somewhat scheduled the price spread out throughout the day. I mean, if you're the first person on their, you know, list, you'll get there first thing, they could have six buildings they're getting to, and they'll get to us at two o'clock.
Mr. Sekler, did you account for arriving traffic from the opposite way on Sunset?
So there is no right turns permitted into the site from the, to either driveway, but I, I would like, I was going to eventually get to the site plan modifications, what we've done is, right now, no right turns are permitted by a sign. It says like, no right turn to school driveway. But the radio to turn in isn't so prohibited, prohibitive. The proposed condition, we've made some modifications to make the turn, if you were to try to make that right turn, much more difficult, to again, not only discourage it via signage, and again, I think there was discussion about Title Thirty-nine being established to prevent the right turns in, but also we've tried to make it geometrically tougher than it is today.
So, so no right turns in and no left turns out?
Correct. I, I mean, in somewhat of a way, it's kind of like its own cul-de-sac. It's really only affecting traffic between the site driveways and the signalized intersection. That's where the traffic... That's where the traffic differences will be.
And if you have any suggestions on how to, you know, make that a reality, I'm sure that would be appreciated.
And again, I think I could show you in a minute some exhibits showing what the current driveway design is for the school versus what we've done to try to, again, prevent people from, again, you can't completely prevent it. I mean, if a fire truck needs to come in as a fire, we're not going to, they're not going to have to take the long way around to fight it, they want to get them in. But, you know, we think we've discouraged it to a significant level, and obviously, you know, enforcement becomes the last piece there. We've geometrically enforced that as much as we can while still allowing emergency tracking. So I'd be happy to, I was going to lead into those exhibits, because I think there was discussion about fire trucks, Amazon deliveries, DoorDash, things like that, how that would work on-site, and I think that all looks at that piece.
Yeah, I mean, where were you going to go before you were going to go there?
I was, I was just doing parking, and then I was going to do onsite. I was going to start focusing on the onsite circulations and operations.
Okay, Mr.?
Frank Dabeszewski.
Frank, would you please, excuse your.
Frank, please.
Okay, would you, please, go ahead.
Do I have to be sworn in?
Oh, Mr.?
Dabeszewski. You just say it the way it's spelled.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true?
Yes. Give you a little bit of my background in case it comes up. Been a practicing traffic engineer for 39 years. I have a degree in Bachelor's of Arts from Rutgers University, Bachelor of Science from NJIT, New Jersey Institute of Technology. Spent half my career in the public sector, the other half in the private sector. I am a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a professional traffic operations engineer. I am also an IMSA Level 3 signal technician, and I'm also a journeyman in, as an electrical contractor. And I've constructed signals, and my career's been spent, as I said before, half in the public and half in the private sector, and that's my.
You okay with this break, please?
Sure, expert.
You don't have to qualify as an expert.
That was nice to hear, but not necessary.
Matt, just, I know that you wanted to move into the parking, it's had a couple of other questions, if you don't mind. One thing.
Can you just speak into the mic?
I'm sorry.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
As long as it's straight in front of me.
As long as I don't say.
Thank you, I'll cover.
Okay. Before we move on, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions here. I know that we've been talking a lot about queues and queue lengths and so forth. I know that as part of your report, there were studies that were done, capacity analyses and the like, and I believe one of the parameters that is in there that gives you a result is queue length.
Correct.
So can you tell us what those queue lengths were?
So the existing queue length in the morning was 10 and a half vehicles and went down to about five vehicles.
Was that equate to, if it's vehicles in terms of feet-wise?
About 20 feet per vehicle. So 10 vehicles would be about 200 feet or so, and then obviously, five vehicles would be a half that, about 100, 120 feet. And again, I would note, that is primarily because of the peaking factor of the school, is that their traffic is, again, a lot more concentrated, so what they experience is longer peaks of queuing than what this site would generate.
Okay. I know that you would send us over some observations, and when we had our conversation yesterday, and Matt and I, we did have a conversation together on the phone last night and talked about a few things. What I'm thinking that I didn't see, Matt, with it, when you did your observations, the queues backed up across the existing driveway?
Yes, it backed up basically to the second driveway. The first driveway was backed up in front of a majority of the AM peak hour. The backup to the second driveway occurred, I would say, frequently, I don't have a percentage, but it was more than a couple times, but not all the time.
Okay.
When you say the second driveway, you're talking about the main driveway?
Yes, the, yeah, the driveway furthest from the intersection is probably the best right.
Okay. And so then, if I'm not mistaken, we're going to allow two lefts in at both of the driveways.
Yes, lefts would be permitted in on both driveways.
And I noticed that there was a site, this evaluation that was done for Sunset, and I was just wondering if you could tell us what those numbers were, I don't recall them offhand. And what I'm looking at here is more concerned for vehicles turning right off Bloomfield Avenue to start coming up Sunset, if they're at the back of the line of a queue because of a vehicle waiting to make a left turn in, whether or not that would be considered an issue that we'd have to mitigate or that should be mitigated.
So the, the typical right turn out distance, so if you're trying to make a right turn, Frank, is your concern if someone's trying to make a right turn out?
No, someone making a right turn off Bloomfield Avenue, coming in, coming upon a vehicle that's queued, waiting to make a left into that first.
Okay, so your concern is more of a stopping site concern, if someone is making the turn and there's a car stopped in front of them trying to make a left turn in. So, yes, we reviewed the calculations related to the stopping site distance. We do meet the stopping site distance for 25 miles per hour, which is the speed of Sunset. I would state that the majority of the cars at that first driveway aren't traveling 25 miles an hour, because the turn from Bloomfield, you can't make that at 25 miles an hour, making that right turn, you'd basically fly off the road. But you do have sufficient stopping site distance to see any vehicle queued, waiting to make a left turn into the site. I would state that the second driveway in the proposed condition will not have queues backed up to it, because the school won't exist. But yes, you would have to wait for a car traveling along Sunset.
Because my concern coming the opposite way, now that you've brought it up, is if we are coming down, and there's slight downgrade after you get past Afterglow, and it does start to, you know, rather steep about 3% of the thing. So the concern there is, will they have enough decision site distance, enough stopping site distance in order to react so that we don't increase the rear ends?
Yeah, I, from my observations out there, and again, this site is currently in operations, my observations of the site driveways is that there is sufficient site distance, both for the roadway's stopping site distance, as well as a vehicle trying to turn out of the driveway. I'd be happy to, you know, provide, I guess, a more detailed analysis to you, if that's the thing that your office requires.
Yeah, which is something that, yes, I think that is something that we'd like to see. In terms of, did you look at any of the existing accident frequency type at the intersections?
Yeah, we grabbed, based on that comment, the accident data that is provided to us by the NJ Voyager website. It's for the board identification, it is traffic accident data that is uploaded by local police departments to a database the Department of Transportation keeps. Based on that information, I believe that there was a single accident over, I just want to get my numbers, one of these pieces of paper here. Over, and I'm looking at a five-year range now, because of COVID, I don't like to just usually use the most recent three years, but because some of those years are affected by volumes, I'm looking at five years. What was reported was a single accident near one of the driveways, and that was hitting a parked or stopped car, someone on Sunset. Again, I don't know if someone had illegally parked on the side of the street near the driveway, but that, that occurred. And then there were two accidents on the approach of Sunset towards Bloomfield Avenue. Again, seemed like from the review of them, that it was a rear end, potentially someone accelerating, thinking the person in front of them was going to go on the green light, and the person hadn't started yet. That's just my assumption based on the accident type along this stretch of Sunset.
Okay. The data that you received, when you input it, was the actual traffic signal timing you got from the county?
Yes.
For Claremont and for Bloomfield Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. Now, one thing that I've, if you could, and I have to disagree with you in one instance here, and that has to do with the trip generation taking into account, what was it? Hold on, hold on. Let me turn off the sound of this thing. All right, okay. We are both, and for the sake of those who aren't as familiar with the trip generation tables and the data, we know that basically what the trip generation data is, it's a collection of studies done for several land use types over a given period of time. Some of these studies go back into the 1990s, when things like, you know, Amazon, DoorDash, Lyft and all, where they didn't exist yet, or they were just starting to get off the ground. A couple of other things that need to be kept in mind as well is that these are data points from the entire country, not just the Northeast, and not just other areas. There are geographic correction factors that can be applied, they typically aren't, but I think what we're looking at here is that I have to disagree with you when you say that the trip generation numbers take into account those types of numbers, because I just don't see how that could be based upon how far back they are. Now, if we look at a coefficient of determination for some of the old sites, basically, that is, is that the closer your data point is to a fitted curve, the better it is. So the higher that value is to 1, the better off you're going to be. If you see an asterisk there, it says something along the lines of small sample size, you want to use it with a little bit of caution. In that instance, and I know Matt has done this in the past, there are another set of tables that can be used, and what it will do is it will give you a breakdown over, throughout the day, let's say 1,000 trips, what percentage of those trips are throughout a 24-hour period. They will even break it down in 15 minutes, depending on the land use type. So I know that we've got that, and Matt, I'm not sure if that actually was done for your study, and if it was, then some of that information may have been accounted for, but I don't know if we can account for the entire. So what I would ask then is if there is a similar site in the area where that data could be gleaned from, or if there is any type of information that we could grab that would give us that idea, what kind of number we're talking.
And again, your request is specifically traffic over the day, or the, I would say, newer services that are being provided to residents?
Well, I think it was, I think it would be the latter, because I think what we're looking at, and I am in agreement with you in terms of the number of residential units generating X number of trips, to a point, because there's other trips that are generated, and you've mentioned them, that I don't know, and I don't see how IT rates have effectively incorporated that into the overall trip generation rate that was arriving used.
Yeah, but I guess, I agree that if there's data points, the data points that preexist Amazon and things like that that are in the table, yes, they have not accounted for it. Data points that are, I guess, post the home delivery service would account for that, because those are counted as trips in or out of a driveway, just as any other. But I do agree that any data point that would preexist that would be missing that aspect, any data, and I, again, I'm not putting words in your mouth, I believe that any study that has been done of a site since Amazon has, you know, come alive, would account for those type of deliveries, as long as they enter the site.
And wouldn't the demographic of the residents also skew those data? Because you're talking a higher socioeconomic, they're getting more packages, they're, they have, they're not using public transportation for the most part.
Again, I, I would lean on the fact that I think similar, because we're using a land use of a mid-rise apartment, people who have, I would say, smaller residential buildings, units may get, you know, maybe more frequent food deliveries, because they're not keeping as much in the pantries, but they may get less, you know, furniture deliveries, because they're furnishing three rooms instead of a house type of thing. So I do think there is obviously a balance there in terms of, you know, but I think it's fairly consistent amongst all apartment living people, may have a different characteristic than people living in a single-family home, if that's the question.
If I could just add to that as well, there actually is now a subset of data in certain IT tables where they will say center, center city core, you know, urban, suburban, and then to account for those different types of uses that they would have. For example, in Hoboken, for example, where it's a very dense area, they would call that a center city core, because it's certain things like, you know, there's trams up there, there's subways, there's buses, and there's all these other, the city bike program, everything else along those lines. So that is accounted for. I don't know if they have it for something like this, but they do take that into account. IT will issue an addendum if they feel that there's enough information for it to make a difference in the data points that are being presented.
Yeah, and again, I think that that is the key, is that if, you know, five Amazon trucks between the hours of nine and, let's say, between 10 and 3, likely are not changing the level of traffic considerably, because the volumes on the roads are less, and, you know, five trips over, I don't know, six hours, as I mentioned, is probably not moving the needle. But, you know, I do agree, you know, academically, that, again, the change in, you know, if there's data from 1990 that wouldn't have an Amazon truck included with it.
Matt, in the conclusions of the, before you move on into the other area, were there any recommendations for adjusting the traffic signal times to get, try to get a better operation through there? Because I know that you said with the delays and then the vehicles and so forth, but also, I think it's very important to notice as well, the two ratios that we always use. One is the VC ratio, which is basically a ratio of volume to capacity. When you take it to account of roadway, you take a theoretical ideal, if everything is perfect, this is what it would be. And then you start chipping away that ideal based upon certain things such as, creative roadway, width of the lanes, type of traffic, vehicle mix, parking, transit, et cetera. So you're whittling that down, and then that final number is what you're using. Then on that, you take your traffic data and your volume, and then you see what that ratio is. The higher that ratio is, the worse it is, in terms of an operational standpoint. The other issue that you like to look at is what they call a GC ratio, it's a ratio of amount of green time for a given movement divided by the cycle time. So the GC ratio, if you're taking 22 seconds out of 100, you have a GC ratio of 22. You want to try to have those two ratios come together as quickly as best you can. If you have a disparity of 1, 1.2 or higher, and you have a GC ratio of 222, that's not going to be a good operational condition, if you will, regardless of what the value is coming through there. So it will tend to build, because as your queues get, there's a point in time where once that queue hits a given length, it becomes theoretically empty. So then, if you're on, everyone gone down the shore, you know, and thought, you get to a certain point, it's really slow, so they'll all sudden back, you're stopped.
You know, just a quick question, and I apologize if I'm repeating what you said in a language that I'm not as adept in, but every car coming out of, sorry, every car coming out is taking a right, and then they're going towards Bloomfield Avenue. We have cars taking a left or a right off of Bloomfield Avenue, coming towards the building, wanting to take a left into either the first driveway or the main second driveway. I believe he kind of said this, but maybe I'm, I'm going to re-ask it anyway. What if there is a queue of cars that are past that second driveway, and now you've got a queue of cars that are backed up towards Bloomfield Avenue, and now you have like a chain of cars coming up Bloomfield Avenue in the right lane, kind of stopped, because they're in the right lane, and now there's a right lane half, car half turned on, I mean, has any of that been thought about? Does anyone know what I'm talking about? Okay, good.
So, Matt, sure, I guess, just what I understand, you're talking about a situation where there would be too much queuing from the project towards Bloomfield Avenue for cars making the left into the project?
No. Well, yeah, basically, the car wants to make a left into the project off of Sunset, but because there are cars from the neighborhood and cars coming out of the driveway that are now, have now like blocked anyone being able to make a left into that second driveway to pull into their.
Well, again, I mean.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think we understand your point, and we're happy to address that, but again, I think you're making the case for.
I'm not making the case.
Well, but.
I'm asking a question.
I understand, but it's.
You said, hold on, Mr. Anglino, Mr. Sekler said that, I believe it was raised by our expert, and you said that you hadn't seen it back up to the second driveway. I'm asking, is that what I heard you say? Is that, or is that what you did not say?
I said, in the existing condition with the school, there are times in the morning peak hour that it back. peak hour that it backs up to that driveway. In the future condition, when you take the school traffic out, it will not, but...
So it's guaranteed not to happen?
Well, but to answer your question another way is that the queuing leaving towards Bloomfield is worse in the morning than it is in the evening.
Yes.
The majority, vast, vast majority of the traffic in the morning is not entering our site.
Okay.
As opposed to now with the school where you have the bad traffic on Sunset and a lot of people trying to enter the site. So it's going to be a much better condition.
And at night, that won't happen either.
At night, the amount of traffic leaving Sunset is not as much as it is in the morning. So it won't back up to that distance in the afternoon.
If I may just briefly follow up on our engineers' questions. I mean, assuming that we're, we're going to leave the no left turn out of the driveway, which it seems like that's pretty firm, are there mitigating measures? Can the intersection timing be improved? Or is there anything that can make this perform better, given these conditions that we've thought about?
So we've, this is obviously Essex County signal, so I can't, you know, Frank can't wave a magic wand and change the signal timing.
Verona doesn't control that intersection timing, correct?
Correct. It's the county. It's also an intersection that the county obviously sees, they want the best, they care about Bloomfield Avenue. They want that to flow as fast as possible, as easy as possible. We provided, and again, this was one of the comments in the review letter, that improvement fund contribution where the county could use it as they wish. The county has, for a number of intersections along Bloomfield Avenue, made technological improvements to improve the efficiency of the traffic light. So the signal becomes smarter, it can communicate with signals up and downstream, it can adjust the signal timing more rapidly so that you don't get queues. Again, it's not our call how the money is utilized at that intersection, but the county indicated they would be using it to improvements, which could be that. And again, you obviously could have a seat at the table with your engineer to recommend something.
Before we move on to circulation, does anybody else have any other questions about the topics that have already been discussed here?
I have a question based on what you said. You said you are contributing to the county some amount of money. Is that amount of money enough to put a right-hand turn in? The right-hand turn lane at the end of Sunset?
I have no idea because I don't know the amount that the county is...
Because obviously, your statement just before that, you said that the county is worrying about traffic going up and down Bloomfield Avenue. So my point is, or my question is, would it be better that you just put, because then all your traffic queues, you would get twice as many cars that could leave when the light turns green on Bloomfield Avenue.
Correct, but in our discussions with the county and their review of the analysis, they don't believe that an additional lane is necessary. And obviously, there are effects of having a second lane in terms of longer pedestrian crossing distances, longer yellow times, longer red times that have to be accounted for in the traffic light. And again, our understanding is the county does not believe that's warranted, but again, it's their signal. We can't just make improvements to it on our own.
And Councilman McElroy, I know that Mr. Schwartz participated in call, on telephone calls directly with the county on this issue, and when he testifies, I'm happy to share with you what was said in that regard.
Mr. Sackler, at that intersection, is there a right on right permitted?
No.
No, it is...
Because I'm thinking, as I'm looking at the drawings, there's women at site...
Yes.
Oh, it's, yeah, you'd be taking your life in your own hands if you tried to make a right on right.
Even if you had a right-hand turn lane, a constant right, you're taking your life in your hands, I would think.
Yeah, unscientifically, yes.
Yeah.
Well, the turn lane would give you twice as much time.
Right.
Are we done on site, Frank?
Off-site questions from the board, any off-site? Because now we're going to go onsite circulation. Anyone? No? Okay, and again, the public will have, write down your questions because you can come up. If we're not hitting on your questions, you'll have an opportunity when they're done. Go ahead, Mr. Sackler, thank you.
I'll now call up the, I'll get you dates. This is the site plan. Prepared by Matrix New World, the last, the date looks like it was signed January 11, 2023. I believe this was submitted to the board. Just to orientate the board on some of the changes that were made, and it's much clearer on my screen than it is on yours, so let me zoom in. Okay, as it relates to turning movements, as we discussed, the main driveway will only permit right turns out. You could see the skew of the intersection is such that it would be very, very difficult to make the left turn out. We also have proposed signage that indicates that it is no left turn. In terms of coming in, the old plan had a much gentler turn radius to make a right turn into the site. If you could see now, we've thrown a five-foot radii, which is a very difficult radii for a vehicle that will be heading towards Bloomfield Avenue to swing a right turn into the site without running over or hitting the island in the middle of the driveway. So that is the modification that was made to the site driveway. On-site, you could see that the loop drop-off area has been revised. It used to be much more overly shaped, if that's a word. Now it has been expanded, and I'll show you some turning templates shortly to allow for better accessibility for fire trucks, better accessibility for, you know, queuing of Lyft, Uber, DoorDash to not be impacted, not impacting any of the remaining circulation pattern on-site. We also have access to the parking garage, and as I mentioned earlier, this site does meet the statutory requirement for parking, both in quantity and EV spaces as required. The other driveway, that is the driveway closest to Bloomfield Avenue, I realize it's not showing well on the screen, this is the driveway that is utilized for larger deliveries and loading. So this is move-in, move-out, garbage pickup, you know, furniture delivery, all of which would be scheduled, and you'll hear from the operator after me, as well as some additional surface parking, which is typically be utilized by if there's a worker at the building, you know, as the Madam Chair mentioned, if you have plumbers coming, things like that, they don't need to park in the garage, they don't need to leave their car in that front drop-off area, they could park in these spaces closest to the electrical rooms and the move-in, move-out So now I'll go to the turning templates. So this is now been submitted?
Well, it's been submitted to the board.
Okay. It's been submitted to the board. It is titled UPS Truck Turning Exhibit Modified Circle, prepared by Matrix New World. Date is, looks like December 21, 2022. What it shows is in shaded fashion, a UPS or similar-sized delivery vehicle circulating what was called the modified circle, which is clearly not a circle shape anymore. And what we've shown here is three passenger cars at the lobby area. So if there was three DoorDash, Uber lifts, people being dropped off or picked up, they could be parked outside the lobby, and in the shaded fashion, a delivery vehicle would be able to circulate the lot. Similarly, if a delivery vehicle was one of the passenger cars, another delivery vehicle following the same pattern would be able to circulate without being stuck on-site. So the way the site has been designed with the circle is that we have the ability to have at least three simultaneous deliveries at the door while another vehicle circulates the site.
Are you stating here that one truck could be double parked next to that car and another one can circulate around it? So in other words, are there three lanes right there? See how the car is parked against the curb?
Car is parked against the curb.
Right where the arrow is, there's another truck. He's double parked right there. Can another guy pass him on the left?
Yes, another vehicle will be able to pass the left, but if a delivery truck can also utilize one of the three, let's say, spaces closer to the door, another delivery truck will be able to pass them as well. The delivery truck doesn't need to double park, it could pull closer to the door.
If those three cars aren't there?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So this shows the circulation template for the UPS or delivery truck. We have the exhibit for the fire truck.
Was that national marked? Did you submit it to the board?
I don't think it was marked.
We did not.
We can, if you want us to mark it, we can mark it.
I think just for...
Yeah, we can mark it. I don't know what we're up to.
Identification?
I don't either. I'm sorry to say. Give us one second, please. By the way, were Mr. Sackler's two reports marked? Was the Boswell report marked?
No, but we haven't recorded the sheet numbers in the dates.
We do that just as matter of record because it's a sort of appeal. We're not in the record.
We did, we did record, yeah. The sheet date where the planning from...
We'll put those into the record formally. We can hold off on that, John, you can continue and we'll go back and mark that.
Thank you.
So this is the fire truck exhibit, which will be one more exhibit number higher than the previous. This is titled 48-foot Fire Truck Turning Exhibit Prepared by Matrix New World. The date is January 11, 2023. What it shows is in hatched, the fire truck entering the site via left turn, driving around, he basically pull and do a K-turn, and then turn out, out the front driveway, out the driveway, making a right turn out. This does require, again, that K-turn movement that you see here, which is why you see a number of images of the fire truck as it ends its pull forward or back up and makes its turn. It's important to note that there are areas in which the fire truck body extends over a curb, but the tires do not. So again, the wheels do not drive over the curb, but there is an overhang on which the body travels over the curb.
What's the length of that truck?
Forty-eight feet is what it's titled, let me...
And if I may just ask a clarifying question on just the vehicle we're talking about. Over on the street side where it's labeled, it says 48-foot Verona Pumper Fire Truck. Is this the engine pumper or is this the ladder truck that we're talking about?
This is the pumper?
Okay, so this is not the ladder truck?
No.
No.
It can be done? Is that what this is saying?
It's saying it can be done. It does not have to back, it doesn't have to back out of the site. I believe in the previous...
Power is in the white hallway.
More room than that, less turns than that. It can be done. If you remember, I think previously there was concerns about it having to back all the way up on the street. Now that movement can be done on-site and then turn around if needed.
I have a question. To set up the pumper truck, does it have to be in the new group or can it go in on first crack?
I don't know from firefighting experience where they would locate the pumper truck.
Where is the spigot?
Where is the fire connected to?
Not, it's not shown on the...
In the other drawings, the domestic sprinkler is closer to the first driveway. So if you're going to put a stand pipe, it's probably going to be near the sprinkler hookup, I would imagine.
When you say the first driveway, you mean...
The lower driveway. So that the co-working amenity, you could see domestic sprinkler, I would imagine, that's probably where the stand pipe would be. So the truck would probably be down there. You'd have to stretch a line pretty long.
Has the fire departments reviewed these, right?
Yeah, they're...
Okay.
Well, they didn't see the revised. They have not reviewed the revised plans, no.
And was this analyzed for the ladder truck?
Their fault. I mean, that's, we're not subject matter actors. It's their fault.
It wasn't sent to them. I don't believe it was.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that it needs to be sent to them, and it's their fault, but I'm not, this is acceptable.
Well, I mean, obviously, we would enter, if the fire department has any, I don't know whether it's been sent to the fire department or not, we send it to the board, and then my experience on the municipal level is that it's internally circulated. If the fire department has any comments, we'd certainly welcome those. All right, so the fire department apparently has reviewed this. From what I understand, we're awaiting some comments with the installation of an additional potential hydrant and stand pipe. When we get their comments, we'll incorporate those into this plan. Again, we're trying to do the best we can to provide further circulation without requiring variance, which I know is the board's preference not to do in the buffer area. So, and this is the best we can do, and when we get the comments from the fire department, we'll, it sounds like there's been communication in that regard, and we'll be able to accommodate those comments from what I understand.
Really, I think the simple issue here is locating where the hookup is on the main building. And again, I think that's up to your civil engineer to...
Well, I think the fire department is telling us where they want that connection to be. We're awaiting that, and then we'll add that.
Thank you.
Clarify regarding the specific vehicles, this was not analyzed for the ladder truck, just for the engine?
Correct. This template is for the pumper truck. I'm not aware of ladder truck circulation being designed at this point.
Okay. Generally, the ladder truck is the one that needs to be up near the building. The pumper would need to be near the fire, the FTC. So I think that that, you know, getting the dimension of that vehicle, and I thought this is typically something that we see in the auto turn templates that we get in applications as they look at the ladder truck, not the engine. That's going to surprise me a little.
Hold on one second. My reflection from the last couple of meetings is that the fire department...
We get a report, right?
Yeah, but they said here are the specs.
Even though it's a pumper?
Pumper truck.
Yeah, so you know what we're just looking at right here? Number 49 from Mr. Getford.
Yes.
Right? And it's saying that the first driveway, which is the lower driveway...
Talking to a wall here.
All right, Mr. Mayor, we're, I'm understanding that the ladder truck was measured. For some reason, this says pumper. So you raise a good question, and we'll get back to you.
And, Mr. Inglisino, just for, to clarify also, because we can move on, subject to the chair. Number 49 of Boswell's letter speaks of first, the entrance that was just depicted on the exhibit, which has yet to be marked. But what is in black seems to speak of multiple turns to use the front pavement circle. So we don't know whether, I believe front meant the circle and not the first driveway, but we need clarification of that as well. So I think we both have some homework to do. Because I think front means front.
Front of the building, right?
But I think, you know, we need to revisit that, and I think, you know, we're not going to determine it this evening, I don't think.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Let's just mark that for...
All right, we're advised that the plan is mislabeled, and we're advised that the ladder truck was measured, even though the plan says pumper.
How big is the pumper truck, do you know? Okay.
I can make that representation to the board, so that will be changed to say ladder truck. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good catch.
The pumper ties to the fire department connection to pressurize the sprinkler system in the building. The ladder goes to a point where it extends the ladder up the building.
So my question is, will the pumper, will the pumper truck go up the service driveway and connect there?
If that's where the...
Is that what we're saying here?
That's what Jeremy said.
That's what Jeremy said, but I want confirmation from the applicant. We don't know. Okay, we'll find out.
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
From the Verona Sunset Traffic Report...
Your letter dated 11/28/22 from Brightview Engineering. They had prepared comments from the fire official, and number one was the applicants and engineers should confirm that the Verona articulated fire truck, which would be the ladder truck, large wheelbase, could make the turning movement at the circle within the proposed development.
Right. But we're now...
So we've, we've answered that.
Right. We're, we're in the process of talking about that. But what we're asking about is where the pumper truck connects to the building.
Okay. Yeah, but the previous slide was not of the articulated...
That was the ladder truck.
Okay.
It was mislabeled.
It was mislabeled.
That's all. But we just, I think we need to ask the engineer where Mr. Sackler, where that is. If, if, in fact, Mr. Sackler is correct and it's first driveway, then fine. He should know where that connection is so that we know that there won't be traffic in the driveway, in the front driveway or the main driveway versus having one truck go here and the other rescuing.
We will, we will get back to you on the question of where does the pumper truck connection occur?
Please. Thank you.
I don't know if we're just going to stare at each other.
I think Mr. Sackler...
I didn't know if there was more questions coming this way. I don't want to get involved.
I, I think I don't have any more questions from Mr. Sackler, right? Mr. Sackler, you've concluded your affirmative testimony?
Yeah, I've discussed, again, the off-site, the off-site impacts. The, oh, I guess from an onsite perspective, again, the site driveways will continue to operate effectively and appropriately. The site distance is such at the driveways that you could see to make the turn safely either in or out of the driveways, which is the utmost importance to the design of the site. Again, it's predominantly the same kind of driveway design as today, except we've actually made it more difficult to make the illegal movements. And we've reduced the peaking hours of traffic. Understandably, the volume is now spread out more throughout the day, but we've reduced those high peaks at the school experience.
So Mr. Sackler, you're saying that ingress and egress is safe in and out of the site?
Yes.
Based upon the design for this project and the traffic volume that you...
If that's all you want to know, my testimony would be a lot shorter. Yes, that's true.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions. Mr. Madam Chair?
Wait, you're telling us we can't ask?
No, I said I have no further questions. I can't speak for you.
Yes, I'm, I'm going to answer the board. Frank.
I believe...
No, I don't have any more questions at this time.
Okay.
Be a few for the operations.
Okay.
We'll get this next.
Just one thing is bothering me. How, how does a ladder truck make a K, it needs to do K-turns to get through that, that circle? It can do it?
It can do it.
Okay. As long as somebody's thought about this, because that sounds super unfortunate.
Yeah, that's what the exhibit shows is that it can make that maneuver.
And also, to be perfectly honest, if the building was on fire, my guess would be that they would go in the wrong direction on the driveway and just pull straight in front. I'm making an assumption, but they could, you know, still access the building from the other side of the driveway as a straight-in approach without having to make a K-turn. They might not pay attention to the arrows if the building is on fire.
I have a question about the engineering controls to prohibit the left out and the right in from Sunset. And, you know, we, we brought up instances where, you know, we would want first responders, fire trucks to make the most efficient direct route in. Are there any treatments or engineering controls that you could implement that would allow larger vehicles to make those maneuvers, you know, left, left out or right in, but would still prevent passenger vehicles?
So what you likely do is that the radii ends of the islands, you can make them what's considered mountable. So instead of hitting a vertical six-inch or eight-inch curb, be sloped in a way that still be uncomfortable for the average car to drive over, but in emergency situation, you know, something, it's more easily able to run over if you go in the wrong direction.
Now, those mountable treatments, would that accommodate, you know, like a delivery truck, an Amazon vehicle as well? You know, because I'm contemplating a situation where, you know, you have an Amazon truck that is servicing the building, but then the rest of the neighborhood. It makes no sense for it to make a right out and then come back in. You're generating more traffic. It should be prohibited to make that left out. Is, is that something that those treatments could accommodate?
I, I mean, I think it's, it becomes a slippery slope because you want to assign it, you don't want to have a sign that says like, no left turns except these vehicles, because then it loses the enforcement angle of it.
Yeah, I'm thinking of like, you know, like a cheaper retractable ball or something where a building manager can say, all right, you can make the left out. I'll drop a gate or do something. But, you know, nothing substantial.
I don't think we have a gatekeeper sitting there. You know what I mean?
I mean, there's, again, we could talk...
I mean, redevelopment plan doesn't permit that. So that would have to be a, that would have to be a variance.
Yeah.
I mean, I also, just to also address that, I do think that many times the vehicle is packed with packages for not just the area, but for just that building. Because it is a 200-unit building. It's going to carry packages to a building, much in the same way the Claret, the guys that go to Claret House home, Amazon, don't also have Cambridge Road and da-da-da. They go there, they go to the warehouse, they pack in for the building, then they go back to the warehouse and they pack in for the neighborhood as well.
That's true, but it's not, not always.
Not always, but right.
But they can't make the right in, that's what I'm saying. Like, and we, we all know that Amazon drivers are, they're dictated by an algorithm, not traffic regulations. So they're going to try and do what is going to fit into their schedule. So I'm just, it's something that we should consider if it's feasible.
We don't want to bring an influx of this sort of traffic into a relatively quiet street area.
But, but it's, it's the same traffic, it's, it's the same traffic coming in, though. If it's going to make the delivery to that community anyway, what we're doing is we're generating more traffic by making it go out and then come back in. It's going to go there.
I agree with the insanity of that, but as Mr. Sackler said, we can't, or maybe we can just bring him seated. You can't just have a sign that says, okay, for Amazon trucks to make a left, but not for every other car coming in.
That was definitely Mr. Sackler.
Is that it?
Definitely Mr. Sackler.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you can. We have loading zones and no parking zones. So there are distinctions between commercial.
But I've parked in a loading zone.
I know. That's why I say, if we have engineering controls that can accommodate larger vehicles and smaller versus smaller.
I just don't see how you can...
My concern from a...
Does anyone like to chime in on this? I don't want to have a debate here, but...
So my concern is from a right, the more complicated that you make the rule, the more likely it's going to get broken. So if we try and slice and dice who's allowed to make the left and who's not allowed to make the left, I think that that's a worse thing than just saying, okay, if Amazon needs to service this building than the rest of the Afterglow neighborhood, they have to go out back onto Bloomfield, make the left on now Prospect and approach Afterglow from the other side. I think that in the name of sort of protecting the neighborhood and the, and avoiding traffic impact on the rest of the neighborhood, I think that forcing the delivery drivers to do another loop on the arterials is better than the risk of people misinterpreting this and making the left out on Sunset. I imagine, I'll be perfectly honest, I imagine that we're probably going to have to do some traffic enforcement in this area. You know, people may or may not follow the left turn signs.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of my concern.
Right. I mean, there's going to be a temptation to just ignore it. And the only tool that you have, once you've gone, you know, through engineering and you properly signed it and you tried to make, you tried to discourage the turn, at that point, you may have to write tickets. I don't know. So it's, we'll just have to see it when it, when it, you know, when it happens. And then it's our job to, to try and, to try and resolve these issues if they do happen. But that's the tool, the toolbox we have.
So along those lines, have you done any traffic studies on the impact of taking the additional left on a Prospect and then kind of making that long U-turn back to Claremont? Because, you know, I guess what Jason's alluding to, right, if, if you need to head south or west, you have to make that loop. And that intersection there at Bloomfield and Prospect can already get a little backed up, right? And there'd be a higher propensity for accidents and such. Again, I'm not advocating that we change it, but to the mayor's point, people are going to game the system. And so they're just, I think what the board is trying to ask, are there, what ways can we mitigate people trying to game the system to get around it?
I mean, I think they're only going to say, well, allow a left turn. But that doesn't mitigate anything. It just causes massive cut-through traffic.
Right.
And it's not going to just be on Sunset, which already has a problem with cut-through traffic. It's going to go up Afterglow, cut through the little yellow, I call it the Yellow Brick Road down into Montclair.
I know it well.
Blue Hill Avenue by MKA. What do you, what?
I said I know it well.
It's called the, the Yellow Brick Road.
I, yeah.
It's no red brick. It's, it's no red brick. It's called, yeah. But anyway, it's very few people know about it except for the traffic that cuts through. So it's not going to just be...
Right.
Sunset. It'll be throughout that entire neighborhood.
Yeah, that's why I was just asking if, if the traffic engineers have done any impacts on that association.
No, not, not on that. That gets pretty far away from the site.
I, I really don't think that there is a good answer for this, but I don't think the answer is to relax the traffic limitations that would be placed on this.
We're, we're not advocating that. We've just submitted a compliant plan.
I'm just stating a fact. There is no real good answer, but it certainly would not be a good answer to change what, what's in place, from my perspective.
I have a question. If a, on the first driveway, if a UPS truck is looking to pull out, make that right turn, and it can't because there's traffic backed up, can a second UPS truck make a left into that first driveway? Is there enough room to accommodate, you know, two UPS trucks or is that driveway wide enough?
Yes. If the UPS truck was waiting in the driveway, there would be enough room. He would not be blocking the ingress movement. The driveway itself is about 30 feet wide, 29.3, I think is what says on the plan. It's about 30 feet wide. So it's a little wider than I would say your average driveway. So it could support UPS waiting out and coming in.
Okay. And, and are there any, anything that's going to discourage people from making a left turn out of that driveway as you did with the second?
That we have signage. We have not, there's, there's no geometric change to that driveway. So that is just signage only. Again, it's a very low volume, obviously, compared to the volume of traffic going in and out of the, the garage. You know, this is eight, nine parking spaces and a loading spot as opposed to the, you know, servicing the 200 units that the other driveway is. So we do believe that that is, you know, just signage would be acceptable there.
And the redevelopment plan doesn't require anything else near here, right?
Correct.
Now, there was, you guys submitted or the civil engineer submitted a third sheet with a garbage truck turning plan and an SU-30 turning plan. And they, they kind of have another K-turn situation happening, but they're K-turning into parking spots. And the parking spots may very well have cars in them. So how will that happen? This is sheet, this was the third turn, truck turning plan from 1-5-20-23 from Sean Savage.
What was the date on that, did you?
1-5-20-23.
I, I pulled it up on the screen.
Oh, okay. But you asked me what the date was.
Oh, the date?
Yeah. Don't worry about the date. I just said it three times.
It's now on the screen. On the left is the SU-30 and the right is the garbage truck, as you alluded to. The SU-30 does have a K-turn maneuver that backs up into parking stalls, the three that are located on the north side. You know, the deliveries that would be utilizing, you know, let's say the SU-30 in this lower area would be scheduled deliveries. So those would be, you know, anything for the building itself, move in, move out. So it can be coordinated in which, when there is going to be a move in, move out, and someone is bringing a SU-30 vehicle, that, you know, building manager, building management staff could cone off or prevent people from parking those spaces. Because those are not resident spaces where someone will park there and then disappear for two days and never be heard of again.
Who, who is allowed to park? Or, I mean, I, I haven't, maybe this is maybe a better question for operations.
Yeah, I think...
Mr. Schwartz.
Let's address that.
Okay. We can save that question.
Yep.
Park that one. No pun intended. Does anybody else have other questions from the board? Mr. DeCarlo, any questions?
It's really traffic related, but I don't know if it's operations traffic, but it's about the same situation with you, is that if you have a loading, you know, offloading here for someone moving in and they're using an SU-30 and they're tailloading at that one spot, can they bypass, can somebody bypass that loading truck? And, you know, I guess operationally, all move-ins going to be scheduled then at that point?
Yes, but you'll hear more from the next witness.
Yeah, absolutely.
But is it, is he right? Can a, can a car bypass if it's, if it's backed into one of those spots? Would a car be able to circle around or another box truck be able to get by that SU-30 truck and make the turnaround, make a delivery, drop something off and get, get going again? It's a good question, right?
The, I believe, and again, we would have to show it as a template, that if a vehicle's in the loading area, depending on the wheelbase of the second vehicle, again, depending on the wheelbase and second vehicle, if there are two SU-30s full-size, it looks like it would have to do some sort of backing tent maneuver. If it doesn't, if the, if it's a smaller, you know, second vehicle or it's a U-Haul van instead of an SU-30 that's parked, it's possible it'll be able to get around.
So that might be a little snafu there.
Well, let, let's hear from Mr. Schwartz because I think, I think you'll hear from an operational standpoint that there's a plan to manage that.
Okay. If, if, go ahead, Joe.
One last question before this probably goes to the public. Mr. Sackler, this is sort of a setup question for future testimony, not from you, but from someone else, but I want a traffic opinion of this. Having people walking in the street, do you feel that disrupts traffic?
Walking the street, meaning at crosswalks or indiscriminately walking across streets?
Walking...
Or along the street?
Along the street, the side of the street. Like jaywalking? No, not jaywalking. Walking along the curb line of the street, going from, let's say, this number two driveway to Afterglow. It can affect the free-flow speeds on roads. That said, there are some aspects of having lower speeds, more pedestrian-level speeds that is beneficial. But again, it would decrease the potential capacity of a road if someone is walking in the street. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sackler, one last question to me. Sheet 5 of 16, the geometry plan, the site plan?
I think it's this sheet here.
Uh, yes. So that, you have a crosshatched area on the bottom that shows the proposed loading area.
Yes.
All right. So how come the turning template doesn't show the vehicle parked in that spot if that's the loading, unloading?
I think we were showing it circulating, but you do make a good point that we should get it in there and then get it out of there.
Because that would clear things up. If you were able to maneuver that vehicle in there and parallel park it, you would clear up the driveway.
Yes.
It's, well, it's a sheet that he's looking at. It's 5 of 16 of the site plan.
It's the one with the fire truck.
Yeah, it's, the, the dimension of the space is 10 feet wide by 40 feet, 48 feet long. So again, it should be able to fit the SU-30 within that area. And then obviously that leaves a 20-foot-wide, one-way aisle for other vehicles to circulate.
At this time, if any members of the public have any questions specific to the testimony or questions that weren't answered and you want answers from Mr. Sackler, this, their traffic expert, please come to the mic, state your name and your address for the record.
And Madam Chair, while the public is coming up, Mr. Messer, for those two exhibits, since we don't really know where we left off, is it okay if we just, I mean, what would you suggest? You could mark them?
Start with H.
223 A1 and 223 A2?
Sure. So 223 A1...
For which?
Would be the, the deliveries at the door, the deliveries at the door exhibit. Would be the, the deliveries at the door, the deliveries at the door exhibit. Uh, and then A, or, or was it 223 A2?
Right.
Would be the, the fire truck exhibit with the.
That's misnamed pumper?
Correct. It's the ladder truck that's mislabeled.
A3 would have to be the SU-30 and truck delivery one, which, hold on. There's an UPS. I have so many windows open here. I'm, uh, SU, the third one, which would be Truck Turning Plan dated 1-5-2023. That has two different maps on it. 2023. It's called Truck Turning Plan. So that'll be the third one.
Okay.
We good?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Chris Riley, 60 Sunset Avenue in Verona. Uh, thank you. I have several points. Would you like me to make them all at once or one? And then you could respond to each point?
These are questions that you have to ask to, they're, you really have to play jeopardy here. And you have to put your comments in the form of a question, Mr. Sackler.
That's fine. But would you like me to just go through my list or would?
I would like you to one by one him.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Um, first point on the.
First question.
First question. Thank you. The study that you performed when you measured the amount of traffic coming down to Sunset, down to Bloomfield Avenue. Did you consider the fact that a lot of the residents right now don't go down Sunset Avenue, down towards the school and down towards Bloomfield Avenue because of the school traffic? And once the school traffic is not there anymore, that you'll have more residents coming down than, than you saw when you did your study?
I just, I, I mean, Mr. Sackler can, if he wants to, but I, I don't, I didn't hear factual basis for the.
Well, the fact is, I don't do this. I don't go, I don't, I don't drive down Sunset towards the school because there's so much traffic there.
No, I understand.
And if the school's not there, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna continue. Right now, what I do is I make a loop around Prospect, and then I go to Bloomfield Avenue, and then I make a right on Bloomfield Avenue. It would be a lot easier for me to just drive down Sunset and make a right turn. I don't do that now because there's so much traffic. But I will if there's no traffic.
Mr. Riley, Mr. Riley, he, he, I, I'm gonna just jump in here. He measured, just to answer the question for you, he measured what was there.
Okay.
In 19 and in 22, but he can't guess what might be there from the neighborhood. He can only guess what could be there from the differential of the building, the existing that he already measured. He can't guess that the people are all of a sudden gonna come out from Sunset.
So my point then is that his numbers are flawed because he's not considering more residents who would be going down that street.
Okay.
Thank you. The next question I have, the town master plan as well as my observations from living on the street for 20 years, I see a lot of bicycle riders on the street. I know the town master plan has more bicycle usage because of, I think there's a linkage to a state park that's gonna be down Claremont Avenue. Um, and I believe this, this street, Sunset Avenue, was called a, a linkage street because nobody rides bicycles on Bloomfield Avenue. And I'm not talking about a couple of kids here and there, but I'm talking about large groups of bicycle riders.
So what is your question? You really have to add a question.
Have you taken into consideration bicycle riders in your traffic site?
When we perform our counts, we count vehicles. We count the type of vehicle, bus, car, truck. We account for pedestrians that we saw as well as bicyclists on the days we counted. So that's included within the analysis.
Okay. So you, you did include bicycles?
If, if they were present, yes.
Okay. Thank you. On the, um, the service driveway, um, when you drew a couple of vehicles that were making turns in there, does that include a moving van? Have you?
So the moving van would likely be what's considered SU-30 or smaller. Again, these are apartments. These aren't, you know, single-family houses where, you know, many people may move in in a U-Haul-sized van, even a smaller truck than an SU-30. But SU-30 is typically what we'd see as the largest type of move-in, move-out for a two-to-three-bedroom apartment.
Okay. So that's like a U-Haul truck?
Yes. U-Haul trucks are usually about 20 feet. This is 30. So it's a little bit larger than a U-Haul truck.
Okay. Great. Thank you. On your, and, and again, I'm, I'm not sure if, if this is something that you've updated or not, but I'm, I'm looking at the traffic impact study that you performed dated October 24th of 2022.
Yes.
You had some, um, some information that I, that I believe is incorrect relative to the public transportation that's available. And I wanted to know, well, for example, you had, um, that there was a public bus that went to Penn Station in Newark. That's, that's not correct. And then you also made note of the fact that the camp stops in various spots along the way in Essex County or throughout New Jersey. And you can only get onto camp bus and go into New York from there. So I did not, was wondering if, if you thought about that in terms of, you know, there might not be the same public transportation usage because of the facts that you had wrong in that study?
Yes. So in our analysis, and this is actually stated in our traffic study, we did not reduce our trip generation, our car trip generation based on mass transit usage in the area. That was listing just to get a, um, understanding of the multimodal options. We did not, we didn't take any credit for that transportation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for working so late.
Please state your name.
Liz Green Corolla with a K. 88 Afterglow Avenue.
Thank you.
Uh, just a couple of quick questions. That's what I asked my husband when I met him. How do you spell it? How do you say it? Uh, first question, S, the SU-30, is that the size of the UPS truck?
The newer UPS trucks are a little smaller, actually. Um, they're sometimes what's considered like a 22-foot truck, but the.
Thank you.
SU-30s, I'd say a standard box truck that you would see in the back, but UPS is a little bit smaller.
So back to your study, being a layperson and living in the neighborhood, the light turns green. How many, you said 20 feet for a car, standard car?
20, 25.
Right. How many vehicles would get through the light based on it? How long does the light last off a sunset and how many vehicles would be able to go through at one time?
So.
Provided no one's texting in the first car?
So, so the amount of green time is in like the 17 to 20-second range. A quick rule of thumb is it takes about every two seconds. You could basically process a car. Now, the first car may take a little bit longer. The eighth car may go a little bit quicker. Um, but you'd be able to process about 10 cars. To that said, that's passenger cars. You have school buses, things like that. Slower pickup, a little bit slower than that. But I would say.
You think 10 cars?
I, I would probably say about eight because you do have, you do have a grade difference here. And the right turn movement is more difficult because of the angle of the road. So again, it's probably, you know, optimally, it would be 10. This is probably more of like the seven range.
When they did the study, did they count how many cars go through at the light?
We count how many cars make each turn, but we count them over the hours that we count. And we put them into time buckets, not necessarily the amount of green time bucket.
Period of light.
Exactly.
Because I've never seen 10. I'm questioning whether four cars go through.
And again, I think a lot of that is the, the grade and the angle of this is.
I know. It's a, it's a long jam. That's the problem. That's why I'm kind of surprised we're even having the conversation. But the other question I had is, based on the map I'm seeing here, is all the parking in the garage?
All of the parking except for nine spaces are in the garage.
Where's the visitor parking?
In the garage.
Okay. And so other than that circular driveway, all the rest that was parking for the school is now green space?
Green space, building, sidewalk, but yes. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
How many visitor spots are in the garage? Or is that not for you to answer?
Next guy.
Is there anybody else from the public that has any?
There you go.
Jonathan McElroy, 76 Sunset Avenue, Verona. Just working off of her question, is there street parking allowed for this area in front of the, the building?
Not, not on, uh, not on Sunset, no.
Because I, I don't know if there's currently no parking sign.
You can park on the right side of Sunset right now, but not on the left side. Current question.
Correct. I think further past the driveways, though.
Yeah. Just a little tiny bit past the driveway, you can start parking on the right.
The right side. Yeah. That's right.
I don't know if that intends to change.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if this will impact, you know, on street parking itself and how that would affect the traffic laws.
Is there any discussion from the council on that?
There's not been discussion on changing the parking regulations on the street related to this. That would be kind of a separate matter, I think.
Gotcha. And just a question for clarification, but there will not be a left-hand turn out of this. Because I've seen a little bit of language that's a little wishy-washy, but just for the record, that's set in stone, correct?
Set in stone.
Great. Thank you.
Can, can I get a confirmation?
Yes.
Can I get a hallelujah? Okay. If they go out that way, do you have things to ruin their talk?
How you doing? Brian Conroy, 24 Sunset Avenue, Verona. I'm a professional engineer in three states. I'm gonna have a couple of questions I'd like to ask. Regarding your truck movement plans, I see they're prepared by Patrick Savage. Just for recall, I'm remembering. He, he's your civil engineer. I believe in a prior meeting, he said he doesn't have experience for traffic and the traffic engineer needs to provide testimony. And just questioning why he prepared your audit term movements? And are the movements in compliance with ASHTO? I don't see any notes or things in the drawings. So just questioning whether you've reviewed and accept his plans or not signed or sealed.
I reviewed and accept the plans, the templates. I would state that the fire truck pumper, which was actually the ladder truck, is a field-measured vehicle and therefore doesn't fit nicely into the ASHTO-designed vehicle types. The remainder of the vehicles, the SU-30s, that is an ASHTO-recognized vehicle. But obviously, the fire truck is specific to this town. And again, I believe that he and the applicant went and measured the vehicle to ensure that that is what is shown on the plans. But he obviously was back again as well as the preparer of that exhibit.
Were there any modifications in the program or any notes, I guess? I don't see anything that measurements were taken for the vehicle. I, I request that they probably should be put on the plans for documentation of how you obtained the, you know, the truck dimensions.
Okay.
My second question is regarding the traffic, I'm sorry, the garbage truck, looking at drawing. And I apologize. Just. Just as your truck planning, where you have the SUV and the garbage truck?
Yeah, it's on Truck Turning Plan.
Truck Turning Plan.
With the two maps.
Right. So on that map, I guess the building shows co-working amenity, domestic sprinkler, electric gas, move-in. I don't see where the trash room is. Um, it's, it's a, let's see, it's a rear pickup garbage truck. I'm just wondering where the truck will be backing into or operating, you know, as you're looking at the movements of the truck to pick up trash?
What is the set?
It's on the plan. Is it temporary? I, I can't.
We'll, we'll have Mr. Schwartz answer that as part of operations. So you can save that question for him?
It's easy.
Well, you haven't been sworn in.
So here.
Yeah, I'm assuming it's right here. Very small.
Yep. So the, the trash room has a, there's a compactor and trash room located, and it's just off the page, but it connects to the service corridor in which it could be wheeled down to the door located nearest the area where the trash truck circulates.
What are the operational hours of trash pickup?
That's the next guy. He'll discuss the hours. It'll be scheduled.
Okay. Looking at the other movements for the fire truck, I see that the whole front entrance area has been expanded. I don't know if you can pull that up. I know you said you haven't submitted to the fire department. And I'm questioning the large modifications to expanding the size of that area. And I'm guessing you're trying to accommodate K-turn. Does the fire department require K-turn? Really, they're only gaining a very small portion of the building if there's a fire. You're not really, you know, showing how, if there's a fire in the back corner or the side, how to be accommodated. And so is a K-turn required? And can that parking, the whole front area be reduced to be, you know, not so close? I know you're within the 30-foot landscape buffer area. I think that that was my last comment last year, probably in December, when I testified, providing, asking for, you know, why you need so much space. Looks like you're providing it here, but you expanded it. That corner in the top, you know, just to kind of curve around, doesn't seem that you're using that space. So I'm just, you know, questioning why you made it larger.
The space was made larger in order to accommodate this fire vehicle, as you alluded to. Um, again, it was our understanding based on previous conversations that this was a request of the fire department to not have to back up onto the street. Obviously, if they are willing to do that, we would be willing to modify that circulation pattern.
And I think that Mr. Savage had exhibits before that showed how you could make complete circulation in fire truck, but then you'd be encroaching into the buffer area. And that would require a variance. And the board expressed a preference that didn't want any encroachment into the, into the buffer area. Uh, and so this was produced to provide the best means possible to maximize circulation without the fire truck having to back out. And none of this requires any relief from any of the ordinances or from the redevelopment plan. We're simply trying to maximize circulation without encroaching into the buffer. That's how this came about.
So the requirement was from the fire department that they, that they would like a K-turn?
No, the, the requirement from the fire department was that they didn't want to have to back out. Because the previous plan showed that the fire truck would have to back out, which did not recall, did not trigger a variance, did not violate any code. But the, but in an effort to accommodate the fire truck, we wanted to maximize the ability to circulate the fire truck within that driveway. We showed that we could completely accommodate the ability to circulate. But again, that would involve an encroachment into the buffer area. And the board expressed a preference that they didn't want an encroachment into the buffer area. So the charge of the engineer, which this represents, was to maximize the circulation without encroaching into the buffer area. So that's what this was, that's.
I understand. Has that documentation been brought out? I apologize because I can't obtain it through the website. So I'm just wondering, was it, was it submitted?
Yeah, in the previous hearings, Mr. Savage had, I mean, that's part of the record.
The fire, the fire report. I don't, you know, see it, I guess. I'm just questioning. That was part of the review. I don't know that that was part of the traffic engineer's evaluation.
No, what was, what was shown as part of the record were the previous iterations of turning templates showing how the trucks could circulate.
All right. So going back to my question, I guess, about having so much space, doesn't look like they're using a lot of that space. If the enlargement was based only on the, the fire truck, seems like there's a lot of unused space, pervious in your, in your scheme here. Recommend that that be, you know, reviewed and reduced or required.
You know, I, can I just, this might be helpful. I'm not sure if this is what you're looking for, but some of the original comments from the fire department were submitted on a break report that was submitted and it's listed on the document page.
Right.
I don't, have you, is that what you're referring to? Like you were seeing that or you didn't?
Yeah, I might not have seen that, but I think that was. Yeah, I might not have seen that, but I think that was based on the previous layout design, not this new revised layout design.
You're right, but a lot of it led to the changes, and there's still obviously a couple of things that are pending in there.
I understand.
All right. Thank you.
I guess similar to your traffic report, I noticed that the Boswell report indicated that you did make revisions. I didn't see that revised report. Was that submitted? I guess it was submitted after Boswell reviewed it. I just didn't have a chance to look at it. Your traffic report only focused on the intersection of Bloomfield and Sunset? And I guess I'm just questioning whether through traffic, potential through traffic, I know you're restricting right turn in and left turn out, that's correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's no impact on the street other than from the development to Bloomfield Avenue because you can only make a right-hand turn out or a left-hand turn in per the redevelopment plan. So the only impacted portion of Sunset Avenue from the project is from the development to Bloomfield Avenue.
Regarding the timing of the traffic signal, can you just explain the duration of the green light from Sunset to Bloomfield Avenue and your interpretation of queuing? How many cars? I don't recall.
First of all, you can provide that testimony. The testimony was that that light is completely controlled by Essex County.
Understand.
So there's no ability.
Just trying to understand the queuing based on, I guess, the timing of that light. You said 10 cars, 10 cars could, you know, traverse through the green light before it turns yellow and red again. Is that what you said?
What I stated was that if the sunset green light time was around 20 seconds, you know, rule of thumb would be two vehicles, two seconds per vehicle could be processed. We'll give the signal timing. It's about up to 14 seconds in the PM peak hour that it's green, and three seconds of yellow, so about 17 seconds of possible cars accelerating through the intersection in the PM.
So my question was about queuing and how many cars would be able to queue through that, through that light? And you said assume changes. What's the actual timing? I'm assuming you're not recommending any changes to the timing for Essex County? Can you please clarify?
We're not recommending any changes to the timing. And again, assuming two vehicles per second, one vehicle for every two seconds, sorry, you'd be looking at, you know, in the range of seven to eight vehicles processing through the green light.
Okay. Just from my experience, there's about like five or six cars before it turns red. I guess.
And again, I think that's what I was stating was that, you know, that's the, I guess, ideal number because of the geometry. The right turns at this intersection probably travel a little slower than, I would say, the generic, you know, two seconds, two seconds per car number. So it probably breaks it down a little bit there.
Right. So from a queuing perspective, was that part of your report? I guess, right. So you have some geometry with the slopes, you know, that need to be considered for the turn from a queuing perspective, not a level of service. You know, if lesser cars were turning based on the peak hours, what do you see the queuing to be? I think queuing analysis would be, you know, performed because we're talking about the residents coming through that intersection plus the increased cars from the proposed development. Currently, I know it's a school, and, you know, they queue up the driveway mostly during the PM peak hours because of exiting. In the morning, there's generally not a concern. I believe in this situation, you probably would have more queuing in the morning, possibly for people leaving that wouldn't be taking transportation. I think I heard you say you didn't consider transportation, alternative transportation in your study.
We didn't reduce our trip generation based on any mass transit options.
Right. So what would the queuing be from this resident, either up the driveway or up Sunset, to allow, you know, just understanding how many cars would be queued similar to how the school is kind of queuing up and the duration of that during the peak hour?
Again, we are less volume than the school during the morning peak hour. Our vehicles are shorter and accelerate faster, so it'll be an improvement over the existing condition in the morning peak hour.
From the school, I mean, there are a lot of cars and smaller buses I know from the school. So you're saying it would be an improvement from the school, but it's different because the school's PM peak hour queuing that I see, not AM peak hour. So I'm asking about the AM peak hour queuing, which is, you know.
It's going to be an improvement because the residents, again, notwithstanding what another resident had mentioned, but assuming that no one changes the travel pattern, the resident number in the neighborhood will stay the same. We are taking out the school, putting in our development, and that total is still less than the school plus the neighborhood right now. So the queuing will go down.
From the AM peak hour.
AM, yes, correct.
And I believe you mentioned, I guess, from that letter with the county, there was a recommendation or no recommendation for improvements, but you're providing an in-luke contribution. How they use it is up to them. Is that my understanding for this intersection?
Yes. I mean, I guess we'll just answer yes if you're going to recharacterize this testimony, but the testimony, I believe that was the testimony.
All right. Thank you very much.
One quick comment I want to just make on page four. And it kind of is derived from the solid questions that I heard from the public. On page four of your existing, of your 10K4 report, the section of 2022 existing LOS path of the analysis, the last sentence of that paragraph, existing conditions, level of service, it says that Sunset, Clermont, Bloomfield Avenue is calculated to operate at overall level of service A during a weekday morning and weekday evening peak hours with individual movements operating at an acceptable level of service E or better. See, that sounds kind of, doesn't, A, E.
So.
These are all As during rush hour traffic except for each individual car, which is operating at an E level.
No.
No.
The difference is that the overall intersection looks at the volume for each approach. Bloomfield Avenue processes a lot of cars with fairly little delay at this intersection because they have the green time the majority of the time. If people are getting stuck in traffic, it's usually the intersection, you know, next intersection down because that they're servicing more volume. But at this intersection, we are processing thousands of cars an hour on Bloomfield Avenue with little delay. We're processing the much lesser volume on Sunset with higher delay. But the overall intersection looks at basically the weighted average. So if you have a weighted average at like, average car's waiting three seconds on Bloomfield Avenue, and there's, that's 95% of the traffic, it's swinging the overall level of service to A. But this individual movement, Sunset, does have an E within the 50 to 60-second range because you have to wait for your light to turn green to get out.
Okay. It's, I understand it, but the weighted average is wrong. I shouldn't do that. I'm sorry. Go ahead. This is Korluk, K-O-R-L-U-K, 88 Afterglow. Just a quick question. Can you come to the mic a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you.
Did you hear? Did you hear one? Okay. Question here, just so I can visualize it. Is this driveway in the same location that it currently is or is it getting moved anyway?
The driveway furthest from the intersection is in the exact location except the radii is getting tighter, so it's tougher to make a right turn. That's the only change to the driveways.
And then the lower one got moved up?
Yeah. The lower one, again, got shifted a tiny bit, but generally in the same location.
Okay. And then any questions around the perimeter and what's going to be done gets asked at a different time? Thank you.
Hi. Abby Chirico, 66 Sunset. C-H-I-R-I-C-O. My question is regarding the monies that you gave to the county. And if they come and they say that a right-hand turn lane is needed, is there sufficient space to do that?
Space, meaning land, I assume they would have to acquire some right-of-way in order to make that type of expansion. It's not impacting any developed piece of the property. It's not going to hit a building, but they don't, I believe, own all the land they would need to to get that.
Okay. Thank you.
Nora Brennis, 47, Afterglow Way, B-R-E-N-N-E-I-S. Are we allowed to note the amount of the generous contribution to the traffic fund?
We'll pose that to Mr. Schwartz. Yeah, Mr. Schwartz can answer that question.
Okay. As a neighborhood, we're very concerned about the left-hand turn and, you know, the people breaking the laws to do that. Is there a way that there could be a camera there that could take pictures and could ticket the people who might make the left-hand turns? And perhaps could the contribution be used as something?
It's not legal in New Jersey, as far as I know, to issue tickets based on camera. If you recall, years ago, some cities started doing that with speeding with red lights.
And that was eliminated.
That was eliminated.
I didn't know that.
Right.
As a person who's been at that light many times, and you say two seconds to get out, first of all, the first car has to wait when the light has changed to make sure you're not going out that somebody's trying to make the light. So there is no car getting out in two seconds. You might be giving it five seconds to make sure it stops. And really, five cars at most can get out. There is no 10 cars getting out at that. And I've been there, I've lived there 29 years. And before the school, with the school, it just is not doable. And also, in the winter, when it is icy, the Yellow Brick Road, which is another way we leave when we can't get out during the school time, if it's winter, it can be frozen and it is not allowed and not able to transport it downward. So that makes us be, again, landlocked in an area that is going to prove difficult to get out. Thank you.
Maria Squillanti, 6th Belclaire Place. I'm a little confused as to where the regular cars come out of versus the trucks that we've been talking about. Can you show me where the cars come out and how the traffic flow?
So 90, I'll say 99% of the cars are going to come out of the driveway that is furthest from Bloomfield Avenue. That is the exact location where the furthest from Bloomfield Avenue driveway is today.
Which is where those five little spots are on the left, upper left-hand corner?
No. Well, I don't, yeah, the upper, yes, this leads to the garage, which is back here.
Okay.
So that's where the garage is located. So that's where the vast, vast majority of the parking is. That's where the resident parking and the visitor parking is.
Okay. So that's where the cars would come out of? That driveway up on the upper left-hand quadrant of this? If you bring the arrow and show me.
This, or up in the center.
Okay, that's where they come out onto Sunset Avenue?
Correct.
Where do they come out, out of the building?
Oh, over here on the left, this is the garage.
Oh, okay, okay. So they're not going to be near the trucks at all, the cars?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who have a question? Please.
Michelle Snyder, 68, Afterglow Avenue.
Can you speak up, please? I'm sorry.
Michelle Snyder, 68, Afterglow Avenue. You mentioned that there would be no parking on Sunset Avenue. I was wondering if that would also be the same for Afterglow Avenue and Afterglow Way?
That's not a question for the applicant.
Actually, there is legal parking on the right side of Sunset, 243 feet away from Bloomfield Avenue, on the right side, going towards West Orange. There is, right now, whatever exists on Afterglow will continue to exist as far as street parking goes on Afterglow. Whether that's on the right side or both sides, I don't know right now, but I don't believe there's any change. Do you?
I mean, again, the simple answer is, right now, no. All parking regulations on streets is governed by the town government, the town council. And there's no plans of changing the traffic or parking on the streets.
Okay.
Any other members of the public have any questions? Any members of the board have any final questions before we? Okay. Why don't we take five? Thank you.
I'll sit in that chair.
Yes. We thought that at the very least, we'll get through your presentation, maybe some questions, but we would hope that you'd be able to also come back if we can't get through all of it for the March 16th meeting. Are you available?
The 16th works.
That works for you?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want to swear?
Swear, man.
Jonathan Schwartz.
Mr. Schwartz, you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes.
So, Madam Chair, Mr. Schwartz, I know is a little modest, but he and his family are really one of the premier owners and operators of multifamily apartments in the state of New Jersey and have been for decades. I think that's important for people to know. He knows that, although I want to make sure everybody knows that. So you're getting a really top-rate, first-rate owner and operator here in what will truly be a luxury building that we think that the community, the neighborhood and the community will be proud of over time. And we felt, feel it's important to say that. Having said that, Mr. Schwartz, can you just familiarize the board a little bit with you and your company and, you know, just so everybody has a better idea of who you are?
Sure. So Jonathan Schwartz with BNE Real Estate Group. We're a member of the applicant. Our company's a third-generation, ground-up multifamily developer. We've been developing in New Jersey since 1955. We've built, owned, and managed over almost 10,000 apartments in the state of New Jersey. We are long-term holders. We don't generally come into a town, build a project, and sell it to another entity. We've held most of our projects since the 50s. We have roughly 1,000 apartments under construction now with a couple thousand more in the pipeline. And like I said, almost everything in New Jersey, we're fully vertically integrated, so we build ourselves and manage ourself.
Thank you. So, Mr. Schwartz, I just want to familiarize folks with sort of the operational aspects of the project. So if you can discuss a little bit about how many employees are going to be on site and when?
Yeah, so I think an important point, just listening to some of the questions and concerns, so a project of this size and the way this project's going to be designed, we'll probably have somewhere between six or seven employees on site, one, maybe two, that actually live on site. But generally, we're going to have a senior maintenance manager, an assistant maintenance manager, two porters, one property manager, one leasing manager, and then probably an admin. We don't know yet if we're going to have a 24-hour doorman. That's still up to, you know, we haven't made that decision yet. But there's a lot of people to manage this building, manage the ins and outs of deliveries, of garbage, of Amazon. We do this all day, every day in significantly tighter sites than this. So I think that, you know, should, you know, allow people to rest a little easier that this is going to be a highly managed project.
And could you describe a little bit about the move-in, move-out procedures and how that works? And are those scheduled?
Yep. So move-ins are fully scheduled, and we dictate what size truck can be brought in. And I can explain on this plan, if we look up here. And I can explain on this plan, if we look up here, let me try and move this over a little, hold on, everyone kind of, let's see if I can get this better. Okay. So move-ins as scheduled will come in here and they'll pull over into this space. This is only, almost 50 feet long by 10 feet, and move-ins come in through here and then up through the corridor to a, to a service elevator.
And those are always scheduled?
Always scheduled.
Is there any particular day of the week or time when move-ins are scheduled?
It's a little sporadic based on, you know, how many move-ins and move-outs we have, but, you know, we do this every day.
And move-outs are generally scheduled as well?
Correct.
Okay. There was some conversation before about the county and the intersection and the contribution that may be required of you. You participated in a telephone call with county representatives, did you not, that sort of discussed these issues? Can you relate to the board what was said?
Sure, so we had a call, well, several calls, with David D'Antone from the county, where he expressed that he did not believe that additional right-turn lane would be warranted. He did also put that in an email to us as well. We are still waiting for a formal letter from the county and, you know, they're going through their county planning board process, but we'll get a letter. He had mentioned on the call that a project of this size, they'd probably be looking for somewhere between $75,000 and $100,000 for probably upgrading the light technology, which should help with timing, et cetera. But we haven't had that formal letter from them yet.
Can you explain a little bit about how trash and recycling is managed on-site?
Sure, so. Is that the refu? Yep, so there's refu termination room right here. So there is trash room on each floor. Residents will bring their trash and their recycling to that floor. It goes down the trash chute and there is a compactor for both garbage and recycling. And garbage gets picked up, scheduled very early in the morning, somewhere between six, between six and seven in the morning, gets picked up twice a week and recycling once a week. And what happens is about five to 10 minutes before the truck comes, we wheel it out in a compactor and the truck takes it away.
And that's a private hauler, correct?
Private hauler.
Okay, now, there are a variety of operations, questions that have arisen during the hearings. We've endeavored to keep track of those for Mr. Schwartz. If we've missed any, we rely on the board and the public to ask those questions, but I'm just going to go through some of the questions that have come up for Mr. Schwartz. Early on, there was a question about, you know, a doorman or 24-hour person, can you?
We haven't made a decision on a 24-hour doorman, but like I said, there will be a maintenance manager that is on call 24/7. And during working hours, generally, we have multiple people working in the building. In the leasing office, they help manage things like packages and stuff like that. So while we don't know if we're going to have a doorman, there's going to be a lot of personnel managing the building.
There was questions that came up with regard to parking, both tenant parking and visitor parking. So let's talk about tenant parking first. How many spaces in the garage would each tenant be entitled to?
So you can only have a max of two spaces and they're all designated spaces.
So those would be assigned spaces per unit?
Correct.
And then with regard to visitor parking, can you explain how many visitor parking spaces are there? I think the testimony was that the visitor spaces would be in the garage and how would visitors access the garage?
Yep, so, so a couple things. So a project of this size, usually we'd have between 10 or 15 visitor spaces. They're usually, if they're in the garage, they're usually in a row in the first section of the garage. In addition, in sort of after hour, after working hours, we would use this spot for overflow visitor parking. This is generally going to be used for some employee parking. If, you know, an HVAC contractor comes to fix something, they'll usually go in here. We like to keep as many of them out of the building and sort of down the surface lot. That's why I think the surface lot is kind of important. But during sort of after-hours, that'll also serve as overflow for visitor parking. For a visitor to come in, the way this works is if there's a doorman in the building, then there's going to be a little thing called a butterfly system right here in this island. And the visitor, if you live in the building, you're going to go around, your fob is going to open the garage on its own. If you're a visitor, if there's a doorman, you'll call the doorman, the doorman opens the garage. If you're, if there is no doorman, then this, actually, this system can call up to the tenant and the tenant has the ability to open the garage for you.
Now, with regard to that lower parking lot, there was in the Boswell letter of February 16th, there was reference to some variances in waivers. You're familiar with that, right?
Correct.
And there was a variance called out for the parking in the front yard, which I believe refers to two parking spaces, correct?
Correct.
Can you show the board where those parking spaces are and just describe from an operational perspective why it's advantageous to the project for you to maintain those spaces?
Yeah, so it's these two spaces right here that they call out. I mean, I'm not sure they're variances per the redevelopment plan, but let's assume for a second they are. We would lose these two. I just think it's a better project to have as many spaces that we can have inside that lot for operation purposes to less people coming in and out of the garage. So I think it's a worthwhile endeavor to, to get those spaces.
Snow removal, not that we've had any snow, I think we don't have snow in New Jersey anymore, so we really don't have to address snow removal, do we? Just kidding, we never know what next week is going to bring. There were questions raised with regard to snow removal, managing it on-site, if there's a lot of snow, can you address how you deal with snow removal?
Yep, so for a project of this size with not a ton of driveway area, we will handle snow removal on our own. And for the most part, we'll just push the snow to some side areas here. Up on the garage, we actually have a small buggy with a little plower that actually can go up to the top of the garage and we push the snow to the dead corners of those garage. And that's, that's managed and operated by our employees.
And if you had a really big storm, you could have it removed, right?
Exactly, so often in a site like this, we'll have a private hauler that comes and actually takes the snow off-site in a, in a big, you know, dumpster-type truck that they have, and we'll do that when there's a really big storm.
Okay, back to trash, I apologize. There was a question that arose regarding bulk trash items. How is, how are bulk trash items?
We don't allow people to put bulk-type furniture out in our garbage. It's their responsibility to hire a private hauler or mover to take it away.
And another question came up with regard to the generator and regards to how often is the generator tested?
Yep, so it's once a week for about 15 minutes.
It would run for 15 minutes straight and for one time?
One time a week, yeah.
And then questions came up with regard to the pool. How would the pool be serviced? I guess that really is two parts. One, I guess, lifeguards, that sort of thing. And the other is in terms of, you know, chlorine and pool maintenance. Can you describe how that occurs?
Sure, so our, our maintenance, our pool management company, our lifeguard actually maintains, does maintenance on the pool, that's part of the package. And our lifeguard will probably park either in one of these spots or in the garage and they maintain the pool.
So, Madam Chair, those are the operations questions that we've compiled during the course of the hearings. I mean, you know, there may be other questions. So Mr. Schwartz is here and please ask away.
Pretty sure there will be. I mean, you know, there's just a million questions. Where are we going?
I have a couple of quick ones to start off. Generator, just to clarify, 15 minutes during the day, daytime hours?
Yeah.
How many visitor spots are there?
Generally about 10 to 15 for a project like this.
And do you have set construction hours?
During construction or during the operations, you mean?
In the building, if someone's working, not during the build, once you're, once the build is done, construction in units. Do you have certain hours of construction?
Well, there's not really much construction, there's turnover, unless we're doing like a major overhaul of the unit, but that probably wouldn't happen for 20-plus years. So this was just, no, we, throughout the day, we may paint and clean the apartment. But not at night, I mean, it's during working hours.
Sure, so what's the decision point on whether or not you're going to have a doorman and when would you take the decision by?
So actually, the, the cost of 24-hour doorman has risen to crazy amounts that sometimes make it cost prohibitive to use on projects. So we're sort of monitoring the situation, but this project, between the time it gets approved and built, is, you know, somewhere around three years away, so.
Okay, how many of your other projects that compare to this have doormen?
Probably 50/50.
Okay, I guess my, where I'm going with this is, there's been a lot of discussion around traffic and this is pretty tight egress here and ingress. So just having someone on-site to manage that, to make sure people are following the rules, there's packages, you know, the lower circle is supposed to be for deliveries and moving in and out, but your storage bin is really more towards the front. So having a 24-hour person, a doorman there to manage that flow, you know, obviously that's not their primary responsibility, but having grown up in a doorman building, I know that sometimes that becomes their responsibility, whereas that, just kind of managing the flow of the operations of the building. So that's where I'm going with that question, is I think it would be more helpful to have a standalone person to help manage that and be a part of that process.
So, so a couple things. So we, on top of maintenance managers and assistant maintenance managers, we usually will have two porters, leasing managers. There's always a lot of bodies in here. What happens is most, Amazon, UPS are going to pull up in this part of the driveway and the package room is right there. So what happens is Amazon comes in, they drop the packages off and then they leave. And just to answer some questions that came up earlier on, so Amazon generally could be about twice a day, UPS and FedEx are about once a day. They create these algorithms, they know that this building, if this building's got 25 packages, they're delivering all those really at once. Those drivers don't want to come back and forth.
So does that storage room have standalone access? Or do they have to go through the lobby? The way you describe is that they could just go right?
No, we like them going through the lobby.
Okay.
Yeah.
But if there's no, if there's no doorman, how do they get in?
They, so, so almost all of the drivers have codes into the building, that's the way it works. And, and so I think, I think with, whether we have a doorman or not, there's a lot of bodies they're going to manage. If there's, you know, if it turns out that for some odd reason, the traffic seems backed up and there's multiple trucks and there's three DoorDash guys, we're going to have a body out there telling people, go to lower driveway, go, go over to the upper driveway. It's, it's pretty common.
And my other question was on the islands in the traffic circles. So with the second driveway, that island's become pretty small. Would you think of just eliminating it and using painted lines instead? I know you alluded to that's where the hardware is to get into the garage. Would you, would you consider moving the lift gates and stuff kind of in the entrance and just eliminating that small island for traffic flow? And then to follow on, would you consider reducing the size of the island and the smaller one? Again, it just seems very tight, it's a tight site, so just kind of opening things up a little bit to allow for better flow.
You mean this island?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we have 20 feet here, so I think it's plenty of space for someone, for two cars to come around. I mean, here we have, I think.
I'm just thinking about if it gets backed up and someone just backs into your ticket, your, your ticket mound there, the control pod to get on the garage.
By the way, we can look into making this smaller, I'm not sure.
Just eliminating it, I mean, you don't.
Well, we want to be able to have the butterfly system in there, which is really small, I mean, it's this big.
And why wouldn't you consider just putting it into the entrance of the garage and putting lift gates there?
Well, I think then you're just going to, because then you're going to block a resident from getting into the building.
Okay, because there's, all right. I think that's all I had about the operations.
Couple of questions. Can we talk a little bit about the recreational amenities on the site? Walk us through what's proposed for this and talk about your management of those amenities?
Sure. So not fully programmed, we just kind of have boxed-out spaces for things, it's not fully designed inside, but on the, on the first level, we've got, this is sort of a coworker amenity, going to be, probably in this space, we'll have probably eight to 12 private offices for tenants to come down and use to work if they want, don't want to work out of their, their apartment. Here's a lobby lounge area, so this will be the lobby, this will probably have some seating, coffee bar. We've got the leasing office right here as well. We design that in case we don't go doorman, leasing's going to have eyes on the lobby, eyes on everyone who's coming in and out. So I, we have multiple courtyards as well, outdoor courtyards, we obviously have the pool courtyard, which will have seating and, you know, barbecues and stuff like that. And then there's the passive one as well up here, just going to be sort of some seating area. So, so right now. Just get to that amenity box. Sorry, I don't really know how to use this computer. Okay, so this floor has about, ah, sorry.
You can zoom it out a little bit, we'll do the best we can. Oh, brother. I've got, I've got the same background up in front of me.
So as you can see, this is just sort of a big blocked-out area. I think it's roughly 6,000 square feet. So in there will probably be, for this type of project, we'll have, I'd say, somewhere around 1,000 to 1,500 square-foot fitness room, another couple hundred square-foot yoga room connected to that, we'll have multiple card rooms.
I'm sorry, where are you pointing to?
Just right here, this blue space right here, amenity, yep.
Didn't know where you were.
I'm sorry, also, what sheet are you on here, so can we record this?
A6.
Thank you.
So this is just a blocked-out area. We don't generally design this until we get into full-blown CDs, but that area will have, like I said, we'll probably have a golf simulator, we'll have multiple card rooms for poker, bridge, multiple fitness areas, and then usually just a big general lounge area with a big 100-inch screen TV, seating areas. This will be a very highly amenitized building.
Do you, for the outdoor amenities, do you maintain hours of operation for those?
Yep, absolutely.
What are those typically?
Usually, I think, pool opens around 10 and closes at, I think, 6. But yeah, generally, those, you know, those fobs lock down at a certain hour. I think, you know, the pool closes earlier and the outdoor areas probably close from around 8.
And are these intended to be fenced or gated or are they open to the outdoor areas of the property?
No, these will be, these will, this, this will have a gate right here and same with the other one.
Are there any noise-generating uses outdoors?
We don't usually, we don't put speakers outside, things like that, not really.
There's a basketball court mentioned in, in one of the documents here, is that part of this plan?
I don't think so, where?
I did, I, I thought I saw it in, it might have been in the Boswell report, yeah, it's in the Boswell, oh, it says it's currently developed with a basketball court, I'm right, I'm sorry, that's my error.
I think that's all I have on, on amenities. No basketball court.
No basketball court, okay. So no, no, no noise-generating outdoor uses?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Schwartz, will the pool only be accessible by residents themselves or could they bring guests in?
They can bring guests, but we generally limit guest passes every day.
Okay.
So the lawn area closes at 6:00 PM? You know, a resident can't go downstairs and just chill?
No, they can, the pool usually closes by 6.
But you said there was a gate by the lawn area too, which is the far-left one, yeah.
Well, no, this, this is, because technically this is on grade, this is so people from outside can't get in.
Oh.
Yeah, but there's a hallway that takes tenants out there.
And the passive courtyard, again, people could go there at midnight if they want.
Um, no, it's not midnight.
are, this is what I'm looking for. I'm looking for some calculations from you. How many spots do you need, are you required to have for the units?
They don't, they don't do, the parking requirements are not established that way. The parking requirements take into account guest parking. So that, that's the way parking requirements are established. So the parking requirements of 1.9 per unit is inclusive of guest parking.
Okay. Is it inclusive of maintenance? And the, and the maintenance?
It's inclusive of everything. It meets the requirements under the, under the...
The way, you have to remember. Sorry, they turn themselves on.
Okay. So, we're not going to build a project that's underparked. So...
That's not the answer.
No, no, just let me finish. So they, so basically, they, no, no, because most, most, not all two bedrooms have two cars, not, and most one bedrooms don't have two cars. So it, it over, our SIS, and we're just slightly under our SIS, takes into account visitor parking and maintenance parking and stuff like that. The redevelopment plan, it calls for 1.9, which is what we park to.
So, the maintenance guy, the male guy, the leasing guy, the guy that's going at the lifeguard, that also maintains the pool, where are they parking? In guest spots?
No, so the nine spots down at the bottom are generally going to be for people like that.
Wait, the nine spots on the first level of the interior parking garage?
No. The nine spots on the surface parking in the first driveway, that should generally be for those people. But after hours, that'll be used for overflow visitor.
So what happens if they are in those spots, and you have like a maintenance, you know, nightmare, and you, and everybody's on, Johnny on the spot, helping maintain your building, and a box truck pulls up, maybe even an SV30, and they, how are they going to do anything in that lot if every one of those spots is taken?
Well...
In that, in that lower parking lot?
Well, there's only two spots that that exhibit shows potentially that the, that the SU has, that the 30 truck has to back up. We actually don't think that that's correct. We think that he's just showing that it goes all the way back there. But even if they did, those two spots, we would have to lose temporarily.
Okay.
But we're, we're talking about a couple spots.
So, okay, that's a couple of spots. Those are actually the two spots that you might need a variance for, so...
We want to talk about two spots? Okay.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just citing what you said.
Yeah. It would be helpful, I just said, but if the board doesn't, doesn't want to give it to me for some, some reason, we'll live without it.
So you have employee parking, that, all of the employees of your building are suited, you're telling them that they should park near the service driveway?
Ideally, yeah.
Okay. And there's enough parking spots there for all of the people that you have working at your building?
Well, a couple people probably are going to live there, so they get tenant spots.
That's great.
So, yeah, so then a few people will park down there. But, but when we're parked, generally close to 1.9, two spots, we're generally not fully parked.
Okay. You said something about recycling, there'll be garbage and recycling compactors. But there are four or five different materials that we recycle, and you can't mix cardboard with glass, you know? There's cardboard, and then there's glass, and then there's plastics.
Yeah, so there, there's bins, there's, there's, well, we have Trisorder, that garbage, different types of recycling. One recycling truck actually takes both paper and, and plastic.
I, I was actually just talking about how your residents are, you know, every multifamily building in this town requires a recycling plan, right?
Yep.
Part of our ordinance.
We always do it.
We just haven't, I'm actually asking you for that recycling plan, because are residents going to be tasked with dragging their stuff down the hall, and then just like, here's my cardboard, today's cardboard day, so I better put my cardboard in, in the room at the end of the hall that I live in. And then tomorrow is plastic day. I'm going to bring my plastics down the hall and put them in that little room, where you said that is the trash compactor. Could you please explain how this is going to work?
Well, the recyc, well, the recyc, I mean, I mean, every multifamily building in the state that has trash rooms worked this out. So, well, we'll definitely submit a recycling plan, but, but tenants can bring their paper, recycling is once a day. It's for both types of recy, once, once a week for both types. We've got bins in those trash rooms. It's a pretty big trash room.
The resident is...
They're tasked to take it from their apartment, yeah.
They bring their paper and their, okay, great. And how are you going to ask for compliance with people not throwing bottles and cans in their garbage and all of that other bad stuff? I mean, you let them know that you have recycling rooms?
Of course. We have, we, I mean, we have people there that will, we send them letters for anything bad that they do in the building. They get noticed, and they have to comply.
Sure. I, I mean, I think we need a plan.
I mean, I'll kind of speak in practicality from working in commercial buildings in the city, which has extraordinarily strict recycling ordinance. And, you know, we just have multiple sets of bins, and we are expected to separate our recyclables, and the cleaning service is expected to maintain the separation. And if there's materials contamination, they have to deal with it. So I think the question comes down to, what is the configuration of your recycling rooms? Are you basically, you've got a garbage chute, and then a couple of recycling bins for the different types, and you're not expecting people to take their plastics out on Tuesday?
No.
Okay. So you have multiple bins available?
Exactly.
They're not multiple chutes, though?
No.
Okay. And then your maintenance staff comes and picks up those bins on a regular basis and brings them down to your recycling facility?
Yep.
Okay.
I just want to make sure there is a plan. Now, there is some bulk garbage, sorry?
There's some bulk garbage that isn't furniture. There's garbage that's somewhat bigger than a breadbox, but not a couch, or, you know, an old flat panel TV.
So usually, the way it works is, if a tenant wants to ask a porter to help them with that, they can. We'll usually leave it in one of the dead corners of the garage until picked up, and they'll ask the porter and probably, or themselves, to bring it out right before garbage is picked up.
There's also, you know, local electronic recycling and all kinds of good stuff that go on in this area, but that's something completely else.
I mean, ultimately, the building is using a private hauler to haul all of their waste. You're not, you're not expecting to use the municipal services to dispose of any of this, are you?
Correct.
Mr. Schwartz, you said you manage about 1,000 apartments?
About 10,000.
Oh, 10,000. And happy buildings?
Roughly, probably 40 buildings.
And of those 40 buildings, how, how many roofs do you use for cellular telecommunications equipment?
We're just about to do our first solar on a roof, but they're not great.
Do you have any intention of using this roof for any leasing of cellular communication equipment or any...
Oh, cell, oh, I thought you meant solar. I'm sorry. No, no, we have none.
I mean, being that you're at the top of the watch on right there, would be advantageous.
We have none. We won't, we won't do that here.
Is that written into your agreement?
I would say, that you can't do that?
No. In a prior reading, I asked, and they, they actually...
Yeah, we'll agree to that.
...the condition of the agreement that they would...
Yeah, we'll, we'll agree as a condition that we won't do that, but it doesn't have to be written in there that we can't. It has to be written in there that we can. And the fact that it's not in there means we can't.
Mr. Schwartz, good evening. Obviously, there's a number of people here tonight that are here because they're concerned about what the general impact is going to be on their street and their neighborhood with the introduction of 200 units and this project. You know, I would have more of a, really, it's really more of an impact question with all of the projects that you do manage, and given the characteristics of this specific area. Is there any project that you can point to that, when you're, when you were thinking about this and planning this out, that you could, that you would give as like a comparable to what's going on in and around the neighborhood, and so that we could assess the impact and maybe take a look at that for our own eyes?
Yeah, so I would say that three projects come to mind. We had one, we have one in, in Livingston called The Hillside Club, a little bit of a different product type. I'd say more like is a product, two projects. We have a Teaneck and one in Englewood, that are both sort of four-story multifamily buildings with, both projects don't actually have the driveway space like we have here. They're more just on, on the street. I certainly can point you in that, that direction.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know physically, Teaneck and Englewood, you know, I, I think that's pretty far removed from, from here in Verona. Livingston, I'd be curious to know, in terms of the, the site itself, what the impact is on single-family residential that's close by, and how close is it to single-family residential in those areas?
So, yep, so one, the one in Livingston has got single-family homes surrounded all around it. I would say that, you know, these types of projects, specifically this one, I think is going to be geared more towards an empty nester market. I think we'll have, you know, some young professionals as well, but I think it will be a big empty nester market. That's who tends to come to these sort of two-bedroom, two, two-bedroom den-type apartments. Maybe a young family with a baby before they're ready to buy in, in Verona or surrounding towns. This doesn't tend to be all the cars leaving in the morning and all the cars at night. They, they're generally spread out throughout the day, which I think is, you know, I don't think the, the traffic concern is going to be there as much as people think it might, because I do think it's going to be much more spread out than, than the current school bus up, you know, situation. I don't think there's a big, I, I've heard numerous times governing body come to me and say, wow, that, that project, we don't, we don't really feel a huge difference than what was there. It's, it's, I think the impact is much scarier on paper than it actually is in when it's actually operational.
Yeah. Thank you for that. I, I think it would probably be a good idea for us to look at those projects and to figure out, and, you know, ask questions and see, you know, what's happening in those communities, because this is a, a real change, I think, for this neighborhood. So I think it would be important for us to just pay attention to that.
Sure.
Thank you.
So the interior space you mentioned about the coffee bar, that's not a public, that's not a public retail space, right? You're not going to...
No, that's just for the tenants.
We set out for Starbucks or something?
No, no, no retail allowed here.
So when we were discussing traffic and parking and vehicle trip generation earlier, we heard testimony that we are expecting 900 trips per day out of this building as opposed to the current trip load of somewhere between 200 and 300. How do you react to that, basically? You know, you, you said your projects tend not to create a large difference to the neighborhood. Within the context of that large amount of, that large difference in vehicle travel, how does that not create an impact to the neighborhood?
Well, I think he said it was obviously both ways, right, combined the 900. But like I said, I don't think there's going to be, it's not going to be as, as condensed into those peak hours of the morning and the afternoon. I think it's much more spread out. And you all obviously understand that there's a current, you know, queuing issue. I think the buses have a lot to do with that. We are emptying out to a county road that can handle a tremendous amount of traffic, as opposed to going out on a much more residential street for a couple minutes before you get to a neighborhood.
Okay. And I am looking at your Hillside Club project here. One side of it, you've got the Wushu Kung Fu Fitness Center. The other side of it, you've got the Livingston Senior Community Center. You've got three houses on one side of it, and then across the street is the residential, and there's a church over there. So it's, it's in a residential area, but it's, it's similar and it's different. I mean, I kind of feel like this project is the only large use in a very residential neighborhood. So, I mean, I kind of appreciate that you are developing in other residential areas, but, you know, I don't know if this is 100% analogous. So, you know, it's, it's, we would have to look and see what these effects are. But, I don't know. I don't have a question based on that. But I'm just kind of looking at it. I'm just curious if you have any, you know, if, if you truly feel like that's analogous to this project, or if there's a better choice we might...
Well, I was just trying to pick something that's pretty close. You certainly have a lot of homes directly across the street. That's a full residential neighborhood, and it's a full residential neighborhood with the exception of the senior center next door and Crystal Plaza. Everything else is basically residential.
Okay. And where you have homes in this neighborhood that are existing homes that are actually backing up to your property line, do you feel that there are going to be any impact on those, on those homes? Are they going to see anything, hear anything different than their existing state, essentially?
I mean, certainly, they'll see a different building than, than what's there. That, that's obvious. I don't think that they'll hear, you know, we, we obviously oriented the, the pool and the balconies towards, you know, Bloomfield Ave. I think that, you know, there's gonna, I would, I'm not going to sit here and say there's going to be no impact, and they're not going to see anything differently. But I don't think you're, this is going to be this, you know, like a college dorm where there's going to be parties going on. And I mean, this is going to be a luxury building that is going to be, you know, highly managed. And, you know, we want our residents to be happy, you know, in addition to the neighbors.
One of the concerns that our engineers had brought up was the impact of outdoor lighting, decorative lighting, et cetera. Since I believe you have an exposed top level of your parking garage, there was some discussion about perhaps the lighting levels of that being questionable. What is sort of the design intent of this lighting? What are our abilities to deal with issues caused by site lighting if they do appear post-construction, if we have concerns? How would we sort of address that impact on the neighborhood?
So we're still, I'm sorry, we're still doing some research, and our, and Sean Savage from Matrix is going to be speaking to that when he comes up here. We do think there are some lights that can be a bit lower, and that can really only, you know, flash directly down into the parking areas. And we think it'll mitigate, you know, majority of any light spill. But he's going to testify to that.
Just getting to, kind of back to emergency services, how will emergency services reach people on the back of this site in, in a capable manner with their equipment? They're going to run through your building? Is that how it's going to happen?
Well, so just, just for everyone to remember, this is an NFP 13 building. This is a fully sprinkler build.
I'm talking about somebody who's, I'm not talking about a fire necessarily. I'm talking about somebody who's, you know, or like a, a couple of things that have gone wrong. You know, it could be a health issue. It could be a multiple people health issue. It could be a problem, whatever it is. How are we getting EMS, fire, police, and rescue over to these...
Well, there are other, there are other, obviously, ingress egress staircases, but generally, most of these buildings, I mean, buildings that are not, there's many buildings that are not surrounded by roads on every side or access on every side. They go into the building. We have an elevator that is big enough for stretcher that we're required to do, and that's the way they go up and down, either through the stairs or through that elevator.
And we, and we added, we added a staircase. We, we added a staircase.
The lifeguard?
If I may, not just, we did add a staircase at the request of the board, in part to address that, that concern.
Wait, that was a very important concern of our fire and rescue. But now, there's no way to get a vehicle to the back of the building.
Right, but there's a reason why that's not required by code.
Spring with this year, okay. You know, it's, it is a concern. It's a, it is a concern of mine, and it's obviously a concern of our EMS staff and our OEM staff. So they've expressed it. They've expressed it in writing. And I, you know, NFP, you know, rated, doesn't answer that question, and it doesn't really address the concern. I, I don't know what we could do about that.
Well, we can. It meets his own codes. It meets, it meets local codes, state codes. You know, and it's, it's new to Verona, essentially.
It could be a multiple people health issue. It could be a problem, whatever it is. How are we getting EMS, fire, police, and rescue over to these?
Well, there are other, there are other, obviously, ingress egress staircases, but generally, most of these building, I mean, buildings that are not sur, that, there's many buildings that are not surrounded by roads on every side or access on every side. They go into the building. We have an elevator that is big enough for stretcher that we're required to do, and that's the way they go up and down, either through the stairs or through that elevator.
And we, and we added, we added a staircase. We add, we added a staircase. If I may, we did add a staircase at the request of the board, in part to address that, that concern.
That was a very important concern of our fire and rescue, but now there's no way to get a vehicle to the back of the building.
But there's a reason why that's not required, like code.
Okay. You know, it's, it, it is a concern. It's a, it is a concern of mine, and it's obviously a concern of our EMS staff and our OEM staff. So they've expressed it. They've expressed it in writing, and I, you know, NFPA, you know, rated doesn't answer that question, and it doesn't really address the concern. I, I don't know what we could do about that.
Well, we can't. It meets the zoning codes, it meets, it meets local codes, state codes. You know, and, and it's, it's new to Verona, essentially.
Wait, but wait, we know that the NF, I know that a fire-rated building meets code. I'm just talking about getting a vehicle.
You didn't let me finish.
Ah.
That this is new to Verona in terms of having a building of this size, a residential building, but for Annan, and maybe, maybe a few others, but, you know, there are hundreds and thousands of buildings in New Jersey where you can't get to the back by vehicle, and that if there's an emergency, someone has to travel through an elevator or through a stairwell. This is just a new concept for us because we're not accustomed to it, but it's, it's everywhere in every city. You know, I mean, it's nothing you can do about it, from a legal standpoint and from the applicant's standpoint.
I live in Verona.
Well, you don't have to live in a building.
I don't think I could afford to live in a building, so I'm not worried about it.
I mean, just to ask sort of the more practical question, there are open issues regarding, or open questions regarding fire department accessibility to provide effective fire prevention, prevention to the building. I understand your statement that the building is going to be sprinkled to NFPA 13. Do you intend to have any further discussion about firefighting operations or EMS operations related to the building, or to respond to the specific questions asked by the engineer?
Yeah, we certainly, we're certainly happy to have more discussion.
Correct.
We're aware of what questions are open in that regard.
The, the new Boswell report does ask about ability to put ground ladders on the back of the building, just an access, a hardscape access path of some sort. There's, it's in the latest, the latest...
I understand, but I, I mean, there's been extensive testimony with regard to those issues, or, yes, there has.
You know, Mr. Savage has not, he handed his site plans in on January 11th of 2023. January 16th, they were posted, and I know this because I'm the, kind of in charge of some of this stuff now.
Those aren't the first iterations.
And he really never testified on any of his own site plans. He's gotten up and given supplemental comments to help the architect and to explain certain aspects, but he has not testified as yet. So there has not been extensive testimony.
I, I, I think that's just not reflective of what the record provides. I, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but Mr. Savage has spent hours up here testifying on these very issues, and I, I'm, you know, if need be, I, I will come prepared with the record at the next meeting, because there's been extensive testimony with regard to access around the building and those very issues. There's not going to be access around.
There was a meeting, Mr. Englishino, between Brightview and Mr. Savage sometime in early December, and we have not heard from Mr. Savage since, so...
I'm not, I'm not talking about a meeting between, I'm talking about testimony that's been provided before the board. I don't want to belabor it, but the record speaks for itself.
And the only thing I would ask is, I'm seeing comments 52 through 55 that are, that don't appear to have answers to them, that are new response. We have changed engineering firms. I would just simply like to ensure that there isn't a response by the applicant to anything.
Yeah, and, and that's a good point, Mr. Mayor. There are, we should, we could have stated that. There, there, obviously, there are parts of this letter that we didn't respond to tonight because they are appropriate for other experts. And so we will be providing, you know, there's architectural comments in here that we are, intend to address, obviously, some engineering comments in here, and when those experts return, we'll address them.
Okay, so all the supplemental comments in the Boswell report will be responded to or somehow, or?
Absolutely.
In the remainder of your testimony?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Schwartz, specifically about the payment to the county, until, I guess it's a traffic fund, is, is that correct?
Uh, it's not clear. This was just a verbal discussion. We will get a written letter from them with some requests and conditions, like all county letters we get. His comment was that would be used for future upgrades, the technology of the light, but I don't know that, what's going to be in the letter.
So, so that, that 75, projected 75 to $100,000, that would specifically go towards improving the Bloomfield Avenue Sunset intersection, is, is that correct?
That's what he said, but I don't know. They could probably use the money wherever they want.
Okay, so even if you pay into it, it's not a guarantee that they're going to use it in, in that intersection?
I, I guess, so I don't know the inner workings of how the county necessarily, yeah.
From the applicant's perspective, they would be asked to pay the money into the county transportation fund.
Right.
Obviously, the applicant has no authority as to how that money is spent. Once it's in the fund, it's in the fund.
I guess my question is, no guarantee that it's going to help this project. The county can spend it, however.
The suit is interest.
Right. Understood. Thank you.
Are you going to be present at the next meeting?
Yes.
No, we're, we have our expert who hasn't had his chance to ask his questions of you and the public. And seeing how late it's getting, we thought we should probably call this and resume on Thursday, the special meeting, March 16th.
Yes.
At 7:30 PM with you as the lead. You're the lead.
Sure.
And then, and then, you know, I, I think, Mr. Englishino, did you say Mr. Savage would be following?
Well, let me confer with my client. I know you and I had a, a conversation.
I had a conversation.
And you did. Let me confer with my client, and then we'll get back to you exactly.
You want to just give me a call?
Yeah, absolutely, on how we're going, on how we're going to proceed.
I'd like to kind of give the board.
We'll be in touch long before the 16th.
What to study up on, you know, what to just make sure that you have no questions, and you reviewed everything, and we can come prepared for you as prepared, as you are prepared for us.
Yes, that's fair. We'll, we'll be in conversation long before the 16th.
Okay.
For members of the public, they, this application is carried till Thursday, March 16th at 7:30 PM. There will be no further notice, no further public notice. This will constitute that notice. Mr. Englishino, you obviously consented to carrying the application.
Yes.
And, and for the application of the public, there is also a meet, a regular meeting on March 23rd, one full week later after the special March 16th meeting. So double the joy next month. Okay? I would like to, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second that motion.
Chair makes, mayor seconds, all members.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.